Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, man. Before you sit down, Ashley, will you remain standing over here? We'd like to offer you some appreciation. Elizabeth, thank you very much.
Oh.
Al Jean.
Go back to your.
Thank you very much. And are you paid?
He's ready.
You're not Edison. You are Edison. Edison, Edison Moore. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you both for coming. And by the way, we also want to tell you that the meetings can be quite long and you do not require the stage.
Pledge of allegiance, next is, well, are we doing these awards first?
We have the awards scheduled.
Scheduled, okay, great. Next is board administrative reports. And the board's president's report has basically one item on it, and that is the introduction of our new student representatives. And I'd like to ask Emma and David to stand up for just a minute so we could recognize Emma Schunk is the Ashkosh North High School Student Representative, and David Mathers is the Ashkosh West High School Student Representative. And we would like to welcome you both to this board meeting, as well as to the board meetings for the rest of the semester, I believe. Or is it the rest of the year?
Rest of the year.
Rest of the year, all right. Congratulations. Please have a seat, and we look forward to your participation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And in that regard, the first item that we have underneath Board Administrative Reports is Student Representative Reports. Do you have anything to report this evening?
Would you like to go first?
You can go first.
All right, okay.
David, then?
Yeah, we better have Spartans away from west than we'll be in the chat. I think we do this one.
All right. So to start off, I had this app that myself and a former teacher, Mrs. Levy, that I had, we worked with NearPod, and it's this new application that basically takes control of other iPads and the display. So right now, I'm running off the display, and I would like to quick do my presentation off this thing called NearPod. I'm Dave Mathers, Student Government President. I'm a junior at Ashkosh West High School, and I'm involved in a lot of activities and clubs, such as wind ensemble and the bands, varsity drum line, cross-country, tennis, swimming, et cetera. And I came up with this idea with the Board of Education of having the actual connection between the board and its students, because its decisions are affecting the students, and I thought it would be a nice way to actually connect the two, so we can actually listen, give feedback, et cetera. And of course, I'm very excited to do this, because now I now know Emma from North with her student government, and it's very nice to actually see this. Now, to talk about what we're actually doing at West, basically the new upcoming events and what has happened is Homecoming 2013. Many students participated this week, or previous weeks, at West High School's Homecoming Week. To start it off, what we did with the week is the pep rally. Now, what we did differently this year was we actually had the pep rally student-led, with myself and my public relations partner, Arjun Sharma, and we had different senators as well. We actually ran the pep rally instead of having the teachers. We obviously had a lot of assistance help, but we did different things, like we remade the T-shirt cannon, which we fired off, and it was a lot of fun. We had different games, such as the Homecoming Court King and Queen in different grades. We had the Trojan Races, which during the pep rally, it was basically they would be on a blanket, and then the guy would push the girl from the blanket to the end of the basketball court to back, and basically it would be a point system of grade levels for the Homecoming Cup. There was two other ones, which we picked different people from the crowd to participate in, and there was Egg Game, where two people from each grade would hold an egg between their legs, maneuver around cones, and drop it in a basket. The other one was a Pie One, where what they would do is we had a bunch of gummy worms, put whipped cream in, and they would pick out as many gummy worms as they could. In between these, we had the Dance Team Pep Band and Twirl Team play in between these events. The Dance Team did a phenomenal job with the football team, and the Pep Band opened and closed the actual pep rally. And in between, the Twirl Team, again, did a great job of performing. After the pep rally, we had the parade. And I'd like to make a great thank you to Bergstrom, because they made a generous car rentals, as you can see in the picture, with three convertible Ford GTs and three Volkswagen Beetles. They were all convertible. Now, I would also like to thank them, because I found it quite easy for a 16-year-old to get ahold of six new 2013 convertibles, which I thank them. And for club float making, we had a competition the student government thought of, of having a $250 first place prize, a second place prize of $100, and third place prize of $50 for the floats that made the most best, and we'd have teachers judging that. This, we thought, would be a new innovative way of getting different clubs out there and getting involved with the parade. Finally, the dance. We hired Beats2Go DJ Service, and we also put together a Mardi Gras theme, which sold 930 tickets. It was a great success, and we couldn't have had this success without student government help. I organized different committees, such as parade, dance, dress, competition, and sales, so different senators and officers could take their leadership roles and go out with their different committees as chairman. Now, counting with homecoming ballots, we had to do that, which I thank again, and Penny Wars, Kevin Moline and Olivia Anderson gave up their lunchtime to actually help direct the Penny Wars. And before and after dance decoration, which as you can see, we had a really cool balloon arch, and different things like that just made the dance great. Finally, new proposals and events. We are working with our staff positively on different issues, such as o-rum and courtyard proposals. And for those of you who have been to West, you know that we have a lot of different courtyards. This week, I'm proud to say that we got our courtyard proposal passed, which allows the students to freely use the library courtyard. Also, we did our first blood drive two weeks ago. It was successful, and we're looking forward to two more blood drives to come. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Emma? Emma? Do you have a report to give?
Yep, I have a presentation.
Waiting for the audio.
Take it easy, Matt.
My name is Emma Schunk. I'm currently a senior at Ashkosh North. I'm the Student Council President this year, so I have some Spartan shout-outs for you, all the great things that we have going on at North. So here they are. We had Homecoming. This year, our theme was Into the Future, which was a great success. Up on the board, you can see I have a little, some pictures from it. To the top right is our Homecoming Court. They were on the parade in the float. They each have their, each grade level is on the float. And then the Homecoming Queen and King also get to ride in a convertible all the way up to Titan Stadium during the, before the Friday night football game. And then in the bottom left, you have our male pomps team, who were quite the entertainment during our pep rally Friday before the game. Included in the pep rally was also faculty pomps, and we had some superfan announcements and a lot of great other activities. We announced who were the best, who did the best homecoming week with your hallway and all that stuff. That was a lot of fun, too. Our culinary, our students put on the Homecoming Tailgate Party, which was a huge success scene. Usually, student council would do it and make all the food and have teachers participate, so they kind of took that under their wings, and they really did a phenomenal job. And they did the halftime event for Spartans and their family. So we just, they put on all the Homecoming Courts, being able to go walk out on the field and everything like that. So they did a spectacular job. This year, Ashkosh North is a school that succeeds expectations on state report cards, so we have a lot of smart kids, which is really good, and a lot of positive ones, too. World-famous classic pianist Elton Hong visited Ashkosh North on October 4th. He was hysterical. He's a great piano player. A lot of our choir, orchestra, and band students went to saw him and thought it was a phenomenal performance. As you all know, we have the community-based, learning-based, or project learning-based school in Ashkosh, the freshmen through seniors, and they participated in the races, the boat races that Ashkosh holds on September 21st, and they all did a phenomenal job there. You can see all of them. They all had Viking hats before, but then they took them off before they raced, so they wouldn't lose them in the river. And then we have some big upcoming events. The North Choir Fall Concert is this Thursday, October 10th, at 8:00 at Alberta Kimball Auditorium. And there's the big Northwest Rivalry Games this week. Tomorrow night, there's the soccer game at 7:00 at Titan Stadium, and the football game, which North and West united to beat cancer. So what they're doing is for, there's five different kinds of cancers, and then a specific bead for just like any kind of cancer, and each of the beads are a dollar, the beaded necklaces, and 80 cents of that will go back to cancer research. And that's something North and West are putting on together with a big banner, with all the ribbons that we've sold for the game. The Orchestra Fall Concert is Thursday, October 17, 7:30 at Alberta Kimball Hall as well. And Dracula, the Fall Play, which runs October 31 through November 3, will be in the North Auditorium by the Drama Club. Our Community Learning Center is a big thing that is about to take off on October 21st. Kathy Williams is the director of that, and she, it's basically where kids can come after school from 3:30 to 6:00. They can use our computers, they can, there'll be tutors there, and teachers from all the departments to sit and tutor and help them with anything they need. This creates like a safe environment for kids to come, and if they don't have that kind of opportunity or have that kind of help at home, that they'll be provided every day after school for about the next, like the grant is, we got the grant for it. And the Spartan Spooktacular is Sunday, October 27, 2013. It's from 1 to 3, and over 1,000 people attended last year. Each club kind of brings in their own ideas. Student council specifically brings in a photographer to take a picture of each of the children that like dress up, and then they get the free picture, just so they kind of have that memory of being there. Other clubs will do a haunted classroom or have a bunch of games set up for everybody to play. And then we'll be having our community blood drive Friday, November 8, 2013, which is a big, we do one, we do two a year, and those are also very successful. And our Veterans Day Assembly will be Friday, November 8 as well, and that's what, this will be our third annual one we have to put on this year. And as always, it's a great day to be a Spartan.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the superintendent's report.
These are hard acts to follow with the detail that was provided by our students from our two high schools, but we'll do the superintendent's report, good news report for today's date. And first of all, Smith Elementary Family Fall Fest took place on Friday, September 27 in the gym. At Smith, the UWO College of Education STEM Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Students had various activities for families to participate in. Some of the activities included walk on water, design a house out of gumdrops and toothpicks, and create your own sweet race car and a scolastic book player. So many attended. I had the opportunity to attend last year, and I know how exciting that event is. Tipler Middle School is proud of being a $2,000 Mimic Foundation Grant winner. These funds will be used to implement the PAWS Peer Helper Program. The goal of the program is to match up and train eighth-grade mentors with sixth-grade students in transition in helping them learn to practice trust, accept responsibility, work hard, and show respect, and a wonderful opportunity to have older students assist younger students. Washington Playground Painting Project, the Washington School Playground area was treated to a repaint US map for Square Hopscotch and the lineup area. UW-Ashkosh Students Represent Wisconsin Student Education Association volunteered their time and talents on September 28 to transform the look of the playground area. Washington School Student Council donated funds to purchase the paint, the brushes that were used to complete the projects, and future plans are ongoing to continue to update Washington's play area, so it continues to be a place where students can engage in cooperative play. Green Meadow Elementary School, fourth-grade social studies students studied topography and the basic elements of maps. Students were able to use the new knowledge and demonstrate what they learned in this hands-on activity. These, the students were given an opportunity to come up with their own theme and create a thematic map. The students loved being able to have choices and gave students a sense of ownership and learning. Once again, we have the opportunity of our students to participate in national publications. Ashkosh North Students published writing in Teen Link Magazine. Congratulations to North's Megan Shore and Tracy Shulkey on successfully publishing writing in the October edition of Teen Link Magazine. Teen Link is sponsored by nonprofit organization, the Young Authors Foundation, and reaches millions of teens nationwide. Trey Shulkey, Ashkosh North Junior, had his television show Review of Dexter published, the Traces Fourth publication, that's Traces Force published piece in the past three years. Here's a link to that, so if you want to be able to read that. Also, Megan's poem, Paranoia, published in the October edition, and there's also the link available to this. Shulkey and Shore are the 62nd and 63rd Ashkosh North Creative Writing Students from Christine Harjes class to be published in international and national journals and magazines. So congratulations to them and to their teacher for that outstanding work. Biscuit, who I discovered was, I, for some reason or another, thought Biscuit could have been a real dog, but I discovered that Biscuit is a character similar to McGruff. Students at several elementary schools are receiving handwashing information this week from Biscuit, the paw-washing dog. Biscuit educates elementary children with proper hand hygiene to prevent them from spreading germs and common illnesses, including colds and flu. The program is sponsored by Symontory Hand Hygiene Company and Buckeye International, suppliers of products to the district. The program includes an interactive video, What's Wrong With This Picture?, which emphasizes when students wash or sanitize their hands, and students can learn some eye-opening information about germs, followed by proper hand washing and hand sanitizing steps. At the end of the assembly, each student receives an I Wash My Hands sticker to remind them the importance of hygiene. And we would like to remind everyone, and we'll repeat this regularly between now and the end of the month, that we would very much like to have the community join us for the Oaklawn Dedication in Open House on Sunday afternoon, the 27th, at 2013, 1:15 to 3:00 in the afternoon. We'll have formal ribbon cutting with the assistance of the Ashkosh Area Chamber of Commerce at 1:15, dedication ceremonies at 1:30, and we'll be through with the speeches and all the celebration of that, and be able to give tours of the school for the last hour of the event on that Sunday afternoon. And we were able to arrange this date, because it is clear that the Packers are playing in the evening that night, so we're not competing there, and we were able to receive the formal acceptance of invitation that I've talked to Tony Evers, the Superintendent of Public Instruction, over a year ago, and asked him if he would consider coming to join us, and we've had confirmation that he will be able to join us for the dedication of our new Oaklawn Elementary School. So we're pleased with that, and so a reminder of that. The last sheet is simply a set of events and activities that we participated in. Most recently, just this week, we had a chance to sit down and review a number of school issues with Senator Rick Goodix to discuss pending legislation and the impact of last year's budgetary action by the legislature on our school district. It was a good discussion, and I believe he is well-informed on the conditions that we face as a result of or with the support of the legislature. With that, that completes the report. President Weenaw.
Thank you. Next up is other reports. Do any of the other board members have a report for this evening? No? All right, seeing none, we will continue on to recognitions, and we actually have several all from Oaklawn tonight. We have a recognition of the Oaklawn PTO for receiving honorable mention for the 2013 PTO of the Year from PTO Today, as well as several recognitions for Emily Hyder and John Furkin in regard to the gym floor. So I will ask Scott Johanknek to come up here and give us a little more background information on that.
And I have, joining me to start with, we have Liz Lynch and Teresa Gatchell, PTO Officers for us. As you can imagine, the past couple of years have been very exciting for Oaklawn and the staff and families, as well as all the district things happening at Oaklawn. And this award that the PTO has received is an honorable mention for overcoming adversity as a PTO group, and so it was very exciting for them to be able to receive that for all their hard work and their dedication to Oaklawn.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I was just checking back on the Oaklawn blog, and we are 10 days away from the one year anniversary of the groundbreaking, and that was just interesting to see that 10 days yet to go until we actually had the groundbreaking ceremony, and to think everything that has happened on-site within one year's time is amazing. And it was even before this time that we put out a request to our students. The art teacher at Oaklawn, Josh Calhoun, Mr. Calhoun, put out an invitation to the students to submit a design for the new Oaklawn Owls logo. And what you're seeing up there is the design of Emily Hyder, who was a third grader at that time, and so I'd like to invite her up to the table.
Present this to you, and congratulations. Thank you very much for all of your service.
Looking back, of the many designs that we had, we had the staff go through and select the top 10, and then from there, narrow it down, and it was a unanimous decision. Her artwork was so wonderful, it was an easy choice, and to think that as a third grader she did that. I will be looking forward, when she is in middle school and high school, to the work that she's going to be able to do. And then we took that design, and in order to have it placed on the gym floor as a logo, we had to have a graphic designer come in and rework the image. And to do that, we had our good friend, John Furkin, and so if I could ask John to come up to the table. And John took that image then and reworked it into a graphic design that would be able to be placed on the gym floor, and so we'd like to recognize him.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And you'll notice, we only have Emily's work up on the screen, and that is because in order to see the final product, we would like you all to come to the dedication on the 27th and take a look at what is on the gym floor, because it is truly amazing. And just to think about that one piece of Oaklawn, to think about all the people that were involved to make that happen, and then to think about the big picture of the entire school and everything it took to bring that together. It is just an amazing story, and so just thank you to everyone, thank you once again to the community. Please come and visit Oaklawn to see the wonderful thing that has taken place. Thank you.
And thank you, Scott, for filling us in on all of these activities and for all of their hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we go into our workshops. First on the list of six is Health Insurance Proposal for 2014 with Mr. Nalt and Ms. Shore.
And Al Jaeger.
And Al Jaeger from AFG.
From AFG, yes. All right, what we're going to do in the next X amount of time is bring you through the health insurance proposal that we would like you to consider for 2014, and along with that, talk about some plan designs, talk about the process that we went through, and at the end, Sue's going to wrap it up with the big budget picture and what that means to us relative to financing some of this. So. Red button. Okay, thank you. All right, so today's agenda, why does the Ashkosh Area School District offer health insurance? We're going to also look at, and we're going to answer these as we work our way through, the school district comparables. We have some comparables we want to share with you. We have the 2014 Medical Plan Marketing Summary. We're going to review the medical renewal results, review the medical plan options for 2014, and Al's going to wrap up with some onsite clinic proposal, and we're going to talk about where we're going forward with that. So why does the Ashkosh Area School District offer health insurance? Well, of course, we offer it to attract, recruit, and retain the top quality teachers and candidates and employees for our district. And if we didn't, and within a commuting distance, if we did not, and we weren't competitive with our comparables, we all know that it would be a much more difficult job bringing in the talent and keeping the talent. The employee premium contribution, as I said earlier, we're going to talk a little bit about some comparables. Back in July, we talked about the budget reconciliation list, and there are a couple pieces that are still hanging out there on that, and one of them is the premium contribution piece, and one of them is deductible piece. This slide has the premium contribution piece to it, and this is all going to be very important as you make a decision at the end of the presentation, as you're looking forward to how we're going to finance a certain percentage of the health insurance going forward. The school district deductibles, as you can see here, now what I did with both of these pieces was I shot an email out to the HR folks in the Fox Valley and asked them for their premium contribution amounts, asked them for the current deductible amounts, and that's where this information came from. And as you can see here for Ashkosh, I mean, we're currently at a 250-500, 250 single, 500 family deductible, and the budget reconciliation has 500 single, 750 family proposed. And once again, this information will be pertinent as we wrap up in the end, as we're looking at some options relative to financing some of this. And Al's going to talk about the bidding process and how that transpired.
Sure. So as we went through a sealed bid process, which effectively went out to many different carriers, it includes what you have for loss ratio, and one of the challenges certainly on the table is the fact that your claims and administrative cost as a whole, you're running at over 124% loss ratio, which basically means for every dollar you're spending in premium cost, there's a dollar and 24 in expenditures from your respective carrier. And with that being said, you had the competition players like Anthem Blue Cross Network declining to compete, just because they didn't see it as an opportunity where they could be competitive. Meanwhile, those providing proposals were WCA, GHD, your incumbent carrier, WEA. Humana did respond, but they weren't competitive. You'll see the respect, 36%. WPS as well, which was over 20% with their proposal. Now...
Sorry, Al, did I move ahead on you?
Pardon me?
Did I move ahead on you?
Nope, I'm glad you did. Thank you.
Okay. When you look at this slide, and this is GHT's proposal for the same plan design that we have today with the two exceptions, it has the budget reconciliation office co-pay of $10, which we don't have today, but that was a budget reconciliation item going forward. And it also has the prescription drug co-pay there, the increase in that, which was a budget reconciliation item going forward. Other than that, it is our current plan design of today. Now, when we received this bid and we looked at it, the 13.9% jumped out at us right away because, as Sue will tell you later on, we had 10% budgeted for health insurance going forward. And that 13.9% represented about $660,000, which we all knew in a heartbeat wasn't doable and we had to look at some other options. And what we did with the bidding process, we actually looked to see alternative plans that some of the carriers would have to offer us, given that this would happen to us, given that what you heard Al talk about with the whatever it was, 124% loss ratio or whatever like that. So, with that being said, then, we looked at WEA and GHT because within the bidding process, they brought together, which is called with WEA, it's called the base plan, the basic plan. With GHT, it's called the essential plan. And these two plans basically are comparing apples to apples, oranges to oranges. Now, when you look at these two plans, you'll see right in the top line, the GHT is at 11.4%, 1.9 million, WEA's at 16%, 2.7 million. And right away, that might jump out at you and you might say, "Well, that's obvious." You know, it's just obvious that GHT is offering much better plan design, a much better product because we're comparing apples to apples. However, when you look at WEA and you look three bullets down and it's called the IRP credit, the Early Retirement Reimbursement Program, credit of $623,000. If you take that 623 off of the 2.7 million up top, that's 16%, you end up with about 2.1 million. And then, WEA is $150,000 over and above of GHT's bid in money, 150,000. Not that far off. However, when you look down on GHT's side and you look down three bullets and you look at the 10% rate cap going into 2015 and you look at WEA's 12% rate cap going into 2015, the renewal cap potential, there's a substantial difference. And so, when you look beyond 2014, I mean, GHT is about 150,000 less in 2014, but when you look beyond into 2015 and knowing our loss ratio and everything and you're looking at 2015, you're looking at WEA being somewhere well over $400,000 more potential risk for the Oshkosh Area School District going into that year. And as a result, it appears that, from our perspective, that the GHT product would be the product that we would want the board to highly consider going forward. With that also being said, we have a Strategic Benefits Committee that is represented by all the employee groups in the district, including retirees and includes, actually as a board member, Matt's been on it for quite some time and Steve is the member now. And the Strategic Benefits Committee analyzed this whole situation for two meetings for about total, about three hours. And the Strategic Benefits Committee endorses the essential plan with GHT on the left-hand side going forward. That being said, what Al's going to do next is compare our current plan with the essential plan because there are some differences that we want you to be aware of.
Excuse me, is there any way to make that larger? So, it's readable?
Is there any way to make that larger?
I know I need an eye exam, but we'll help.
You can also get the board a copy of the powerpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Send it. We'll leave it all to you.
Thank you. I can read that. Thank you.
That does it. Thank you very much.
If you want to come on. You kind of run them out?
Sure.
As you go through the comparison of what you currently have versus what is on the proposed alternative plan, you'll, for the most part, frankly, a lot of these changes won't have a lot of impact on most staff members. And much of this, for example, physical therapy, physical speech, occupational therapy, the various therapies, rehab, currently, there is no limit on the number of visits. With, and part of the changes are frankly consistent with the healthcare reform, the essential benefit plan design that's being proposed at all, minimum essential benefits as of January 14. So, you'll see limits such as 20 visits per benefit period for the various services. When you get into certain coverages like home health services, it's 60 visits. And as a result, again, the changes for the most part are going from no limits to a specific number of limits. My experience in general, when it comes to limits, the main purpose of them is just in various insurance industry reasons, is to make sure that it's actually improving the care as opposed to becoming more of a, you know, one of the things, for example, in chiropractic, that it's not something that's becoming something as a nicety as opposed to something that's actually improving the health condition of the individual. Those are the type of the purposes for those type of limits. Meanwhile, eligibility and as far as paid leave of absence, it's going from a two-year to more of the standard penalty medical leave coverage, 12 weeks after end of leave or end of active employment. Disabled children, I'm sorry, is there a way to scroll it up? For the most part, disabled children, cold or eligibility, you'll see more or less higher definition as to the IRS definition of dependent. And frankly, that's not a change other than it's more defined. When we start getting into the most substantive change is when you start talking about the network, non-network, deductible, maximum out-of-pocket. Currently, when you have in and out of network, the deductible, if you go in or out of network, accumulate as an aggregate together. Now, they'll be separate. So, for individuals that may go in and out of network, they have two buckets to fill, which could be a significant difference. So, it really, in the end, this is the real, like I would suggest, most significant piece. And then, finally, it speaks to prior authorization. So, there is a more substantial penalty for prior authorization. Frankly, that had not been an issue in general, so I don't see that being a big deal. One piece that's noteworthy, co-pays will start counting toward maximum out-of-pocket. That's actually an improvement because there are co-pays. Currently, they're not, they don't go toward maximum out-of-pocket. In the future, they will. And next year, following year, pharmacy will also start being built in too. So, those are the most significant points of interest.
All right. Can we talk a little bit more on the onsite clinic possibilities?
Sure. So, when we had a workshop specifically around healthcare reform and we started talking about Cadillac Hacks and the long-term implications of medical trends and the need to start bending medical trend, we were starting to look for alternate approaches that help us bend the trend. And the carriers have become, you know, as we continue to leverage them to help us help them and vice versa, the concept of onsite clinics has become, onsite, nearsite clinics has become a significant opportunity to do just that. The carriers have incorporated and built in some additional $500,000 to begin coordinating that type of concept. And in the end, the idea is to integrate wellness as well as whether it's a nurse practitioner, PA, physician assistant, to just become more proactive, preventative in nature. And again, that's a quite generous and aggressive proposal. And the idea again is not to necessarily, you know, remove the current method of being able to seek care, but it certainly, the motivation is to become more preventative And this just kind of lists out some of the key items of proposal, some of the examples that it's commonly used for. And while it will speak to common approaches for chronic condition, hypertension, diabetes, acute care in general, that it can certainly assist with. Health coaching is a significant opportunity and working to integrate it with the current wellness initiatives, immunization, allergy, physicals, blood work, lab tests, et cetera. And I think the main purpose of kind of laying this out was to show you the potential breadth of what certainly can be incorporated into it. Meanwhile, as mentioned in some of the committee meetings, that we had discussed this concept, right now, it's a wet piece of clay that we can do a heck of a lot with and, you know, that's certainly where our focus will be in the upcoming, suggested upcoming months.
Where are they planning on the onsite clinic taking place?
Well, Steve, in some of our discussions, we certainly, in the committee, the idea of whether it's, whether we take an approach of where Sheboygan, for example, had a nearsite and there was some suggestion, there may be an existing facility that is owned within the district that very well could be converted to do it as well. So, there is no requirement as to specific where, but that will certainly become part of the suggested...
What we'd most likely do, today is the opportunity to make you aware that we're looking at this and we're examining it, exploring the options. What we most likely do is we'll probably have a committee come together and A, start to look at, you know, all of the necessary components and what would be a location, what is the feasibility of something onsite in the district, what's the feasibility of something offsite? And interestingly enough, I received a phone call a couple of weeks ago, I believe it was from Winnebago County, and their HR person who's done some work with onsite clinics and looking to maybe possibly combine with us. So, you know, and maybe the city, who knows where that's all going to go.
And I can add that those discussions have come to me on the potential interest of county government, city government, and school district working together. And as part of our efforts to collaborate with other municipalities, there might be some real possibilities and I have only heard expressions of interest, no expressions of, "We wouldn't look at that." And I think it would be a wonderful example to the community for such a partnership to potentially develop.
Sue's going to take over now and look at the big budget picture. And one of the things, if I can just go back here, right here to the GHT, the 11.4% there. And remember, we had 10% budgeted, so we're 1.4% over that 10%. So, we have to come up with a means of that. That 1.4% represents about $240,000. So, going forward, right here, this is where Sue's going to take over and talk about that 1.4% and the big budget, big picture budget and how we can go forward from there.
Well, the budget we presented at the budget hearing and some of the changes that we've made to date, we are presenting a balanced budget. And even though this 11% would be about $224,000 more, the budget that we're presenting does have 15% employee contribution, not the 16%. It also keeps the deductible at 250-500. The 500-750 wasn't put in the budget. So, the budget that you currently have has the existing 250-500 and the existing 15%. Mike, has there the difference between in-going and outgoing staff? We'd look at that a little closer. That's more like $324,000 when you take a look at both teachers and paraprofessionals and all the benefits associated with those groups. If we, when we update our budget, there's about a $324,000 savings there. So, I think the changes we've already made through the budget reconciliation is moving the dental premium from a zero employee contribution to a 15% contribution. That's in the budget. And then, all of these other changes, the adding the office co-pay, changing the out-of-network co-pay and adding those drug changes, those are already a lot of changes on our employees. And if you can see from the comparables that Mike did, the 15% is one of the highest employee contributions in the valley. And the 250-500, even though it's about in the middle, it's our opinion that since you really don't need to do this at this point, that maybe raising that to 500-750 or 500,000 might be something better done in a future year when you really do need to make more budget considerations. And part of the budget reconciliation was using fund balance and to date, the budget that exists right now does not use fund balance.
So, in other words, that means the $1 million plus the additional $300,000 were not used to offset that and so, that is retained in fund balance. So, we're balanced without using fund balance.
So, what we're looking to do tonight is A, have you considered GHT in the essential plan, which was the 11.4% and that essential plan that Al referred to and how's he compared it to the current plan with the essential plan? And then, to look at the options there relative to offsetting the 1.4%, which is approximately, you know, $240-ish thousand. And the options, there are three options up there relative to that. And as Sue mentioned, we want to definitely make you aware that relative to the deductible piece, that this plan will increase co-pays from $0 to $10 per visit, will increase the prescription drugs, as you can see up, as you can see there, just take the retail 31-day from 0.5, 20.40 to 0.10, 30.60 and $100 deduct, co-pay cost for specialty. And it takes the dental premium from the current 0 to 15%. So, those are three pieces that as you're thinking about how we're going to offset that 1.4 and Sue has the premium contribution of 15% in the budget and she has the deductible of 250-500, which is current in the budget. So, we're looking to possibly see what direction you'd like to go to offset that 1.4% and any questions that you may have.
The specialty drugs was something that I do remember discussing, I guess, and I currently, what you're listing there is that they're still in the plan. They haven't been removed like we were considering early on, but that they're at the highest co-pay per...
Well, previously, most specialty drugs were, for example, the $20 level. So, going to the $100 for most specialty drugs, obviously, the $80 would be the delta that would be the main difference. Is that what you're asking?
Well, we were talking about the possibility that they may have to be removed in order to even get somebody to bid early on because, and talking about a separate, having them under a separate item or a separate plan. And that's no longer the case. They're still in there. They're still in there. We're still able to get it and all that's going to help out.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question under the options. Could you speak to the first option there, offsetting with salary difference in outgoing versus incoming staff and how realistic that would be to achieve?
We, speaking with, well, we did two things. We looked at the differences between the outgoing retirees and the incoming staff to replace them.
Okay.
We looked at the difference between the outgoing resignations, which I'm going to share with you a little bit later tonight, which were 63, I think, and the people that came in for those. And then we looked at other positions that we were adding or what was happening out there totally. And then we, then I went to Kelly Hand, your controller, and said, Kelly, you know, I'm seeing that we have some dollars in a difference here. And do you have any means through the Skyward process to, to really put a pulse on that to see how it matches up? And Kelly was able to go in and say, here's what we have budgeted for teachers, for example. Here's what we have in the system as expenditures for the 13, 14 school year. And here's the difference. And that difference for teachers was 200,000. And that difference for paras was about this.
About 100,000.
About 100,000, which, and I just didn't, when we made, when we made the PowerPoint, we didn't put the paras in there. They're a little bit more volatile group as far as we have, you know, some, we have some certain needs and certain student needs and we end up putting some support in there with the paras. So I was a little bit, a little bit anxious to put that out there, but totally it would be about 300,000 there.
So what I hear you saying then is that the numbers under those three options are actual numbers, they're not estimates?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. And those are calculations that we worked at in the last three weeks or so to make sure that as with, school is open, that our staffing needs, bearing in mind that we, we maintained the original plan on staffing throughout the district. But Mike's later report shows the exodus and that there is, there's, this is demonstrating the one positive of losing people, it saves money. But that's, that's the only one that I could, because we're losing talent as well when we lose fine people. And, but there, we knew that there would be a difference. On the teaching side, because, and Mike will show where we're losing people, we had anticipated that number could have been bigger. But what we're losing people is at the younger level, we're not losing them as more mature, senior teachers as a whole. And so that number was minimized by the reality of where, where we're losing people in their career care.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Knopf.
I have a question on the opening figure that we saw, the loss ratio at 124%. Do we have comparable data? The question being, do we have a particularly unhealthy employee population? Are we an outlier at the 124%? Mark, are there any way of knowing that?
Probably the main, we have been looking at the various outlying areas and probably one of the most significant outlying areas was in fact the prescription drug category, which certainly drove a lot of the adjustments on the prescription drug. And you'll, you see that it's probably the most impacted plan design category.
And I can share with you, I was shocked when I reviewed our plans coming, the, the level of, of contribution for my experiences have 20 or $25 office visit co-pay, co-pay for years. When there is none or $10, that's a very small, this, this has been a very good plan that has existed. And, and that's not, most Minnesota plans that I negotiated were generally in the, in the last 10 years were $20 co-pays. In fact, on the insurance that I'm still carrying for Minnesota, it was $20 co-pay per office visit. And so we have a, we have a plan that has been very generous. The prescriptions in a likely, in a common manner there is also far richer than the one I carry with me. And, but it's what communities have gotten used to and what our employees have gotten used to. And so those changes become very much more difficult.
I have another question. Looking at the disparity, say from Howard Swamaco at one end to OASV or whomever was the other end on the employee contribution, it certainly raises the question, I don't mean to go any, any further than raising the question. Have there been examples throughout the country of neighboring school districts? And I don't know if antitrust law applies in public sector entities. But one could see that there'd be neighboring districts that might want to unify benefit levels or make kind of a level playing field. I'm just wondering if you know of examples of that happening? Because one can't help but see the disparity and that thought comes to mind. Any, any knowledge of such things?
Well, I can tell you, I work, and I'll call them pods, because while there's CISA's that share communication amongst districts, and they tend to gravitate toward one level versus another. And I can tell you that also, kind of like Mike did, as far as communicating amongst the area districts, they tend to gravitate together. That doesn't mean they necessarily do the exact same, but I will say the 12.6 that was kind of promoted with Act 10 has become, you'll see, that's somewhat of a center number at this point. So I mean, that just kind of gives you some benchmarking, but there isn't necessarily unification, if you will.
And there is no, districts may and could cooperate, coming to a common ground and having boards agree. And in the old days, in collective bargaining, having employee groups agree was a mountain to climb. It would take, as, as you know, the number of meetings, both Matt and Steve have participated in the number of meetings that our leadership team have worked with insurance, coming to common agreement among employee groups within one district is a massive task. Unless you have a unilateral imposition and say that all, I'll just use this as a radical example, all school districts in Winnebago County would agree to put together a package that was of a common level. You would potentially increase your, your base, your risk pool would be larger. All of those variables could have a positive impact. But if there were some centers of high spending or high, poor history in one or more of those districts within Winnebago County in that example, they would also end up with potentially having a cost increase that would be greater than the one we're proposing to you. So it is, it's a risky issue and having done cooperative agreements with numerous neighboring districts in the past, holding the coalitions together on a year-to-year basis because of political decisions, both on the part of employees as well as on school boards is a very, or, or governing bodies, including town councils, city councils, and, and county boards, is a very difficult one to keep them all on the same track at the same time. And it is possible, but because of political winds that blow, it is very, very difficult to accomplish.
I like your thinking. And I think at some point, people are going to be forced to have to do it.
My understanding is then that this, whatever insurance carrier is chosen, would, the plans that you've outlined would apply to all employee groups, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. From an equity standpoint, then, the, the folks who make up the paraprofessional pool and the secretarial pool, who traditionally make less money annually than teachers and administrators, would be paying a larger share, a larger percentage, rather, larger percentage if we were to increase the deductibles than the employees in the teacher and administrative ranks. Is that true?
That's fairly true, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Proportionate ratio, yes.
On the comparables that you have there, Michael, did we do anything with other districts, surrounding districts in regards to like our 20% if you don't take, you know, do a physical or whatever it is there?
With the, with the health risk assessment and the biometric screening? I did not, Steve.
Do you think that, I mean, have you heard of other districts doing that? I think it's a good idea with the whole wellness, moving toward wellness and stuff.
We did a comparable when I was in Fond du Lac, and most districts are starting to go towards some kind of differentiation between people who take the online health assessment and people who don't. Most districts have like 3% to 5% is the differential, is the, is the average.
Okay. Did any of the other bids as well, did they, anybody else talk about onsite clinics?
Onsite clinic was part of the bid process.
WEA, yes.
Yes. Yes. So, so if you, let's just go back here. Let's just go to this screen. So if you look at, you can look at left or right. And what the, the bid offers is, is an onsite clinic for 500,000, 24/7 nurse line, $50,000 wellness grant for wellness activities. And this is, this is what Steve was just referring to, the health risk assessment and where we contracted with Helix, 200,000, GHT 200,000 total, WA was 84,000, or $84 per per employee, per participant. And relative to Helix, or relative to the health risk assessment, just, just for your knowledge, we had over 97% participation rate, and that was employees and spouses this year. And the feedback that we received relative to Helix doing it was phenomenal. Diane Vogel was, was just very, very, very satisfied, very pleased. The annual exam, which is a preventative exam, and it, GHT will offer a $50 debit card, and the PCORI fees and the COBRA registration are both included. So, so that's what, that's, that's basically what we're looking at. And of course, you know, the plan design that goes with it, but.
And regarding onsite clinic or clinic, the insurance that I have brought with me from my previous employer yet, they offer that as an onsite clinic, plus they have a specialty contract with a local, small independent clinic. And so they have set aside in a, in a community ed building facility that is early childhood education and has other programming in a two-room suite, I believe it is now, that was remodeled into a model medical office. And, and it has office hours that are, are available, convenient to employees. It is not necessarily open during all hours, long hours is typical clinic, but it then provides services at, and no additional, no co-office visit co-pays, and, and it controls the operational costs of, of a given set of services. And it doesn't prohibit a individual from reaching out to their personal family physician, but the day-to-day sick child, things that are, you know, 70, 80% of office visits can be handled in that facility. And, and I visited it just to get a sense of, of what's there. I didn't use it as patient, but wanting to see how does it work, because I knew we were going to be looking at that. And, and I think it's certainly something that would be worthwhile. Based on our number of employees, I really do believe we need to reach out to sister public agencies to be partners with it to, to do so. And I think it's, it's certainly worth continuing that conversation. I think the example, and we're fortunate, the human resources director in Winnebago County, I believe, organized such a program in Sheboygan County and left Sheboygan County and has experience in that area. And so the expertise is here in, in the county that could be a good leader for us in setting up such a plan.
Just going back, just, you know, I just, and I know we went pretty quickly, so let me just go back and hopefully not be repetitive in that with you. But when you, when you look and you compare these two, once again, GHT on the left, force pull it's at 11.4%, WA's at 16. And of course, once again, that jumps out at you like, whoa, there's a huge difference there. But you have to take that, that herb credit off of that, and that's 2.1 million. So the difference there is about 150,000, meaning 150,000 GHT is to the good. Now, but when you look back, like, I want to go back to over 2015 again, when you go out that, that second year, GHT is, is providing us with a cap of 10%, where WA is providing a cap of 12%. And now, the risk we take is if it goes to 12%, we're well over $400,000 more in the second year, you know? So.
And since we're over, over 100% on our rate of views, the chances of that it's, us hitting the maximum is almost 100%.
Along with medical trend?
Right. I don't see any way that we wouldn't.
And when you look at all the bids that came in this past year and the percentages, I mean, look at where, look at where we were, 13.9 with the plan design of today and 16% and above. So I mean, you know, I just think, I just think it'd be a huge risk. And I don't, and, you know, speak for myself, but the strategic benefits committee also analyzed this and would also like endorse GHT because they see it as a risk also. And when you look at the onsite clinic, GHT is, they've said will give you 500,000, up to 500,000, whereas WA's, if further details be provided, that's a little wishy-washy too. So, where that could end up. So, so I think, I think the strategic benefits committee did their homework and GHT is the one that they would endorse and recommend to you as board.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And just as a reminder, again, we're not asking for action this evening. You have the two-week interim to consider this information. And we'll be bringing this back as a formal recommendation administratively to you.
Thank you very much. Number two, property values and necessary budget adjustments.
This PowerPoint was added to the board packet on the Google Drive.
Is it the budget workshop?
Yes.
Looks like, looks like this.
I don't really have a whole lot more to share with you at this point. We do have property values, property values came in. And we've, we've budgeted for a zero increase, and I was actually worried that they would go down based on what was out in the Department of Revenue for municipalities. But they actually went up, but they only went up 0.05%. So it's pretty insignificant. So if I went to carry it out two decimal places, it would be, it would be zero. And as you can see, there's some, there's some ones that gained and ones that lost. So overall, though, the percentages stayed pretty close to the same, but they varied just a little bit. So then here are the, basically the three different tax levy scenarios that we've kind of been looking at already. The, the very first column is the one that's actually was approved in the preliminary budget and was in the budget hearing book. And then at the budget hearing itself, I threw out the, the last column, the possible 8.75% levy. And this was if we grew by students, if we had a decrease in equalization aid. So that was almost like the worst-case scenario. And because we didn't grow by students, but we're still anticipating a decrease in equalization aid, the middle column is, 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 I think, closer to where we probably will end up. But again, we won't get equalization aid until October 15th or so. So this is still just a very, very preliminary projection. And you can see the difference in, in equalized value really doesn't have that much of an impact. You know, the, the levy change might be 8.05, but then the levy rate itself is like 8%. That 0.5 doesn't really have much of an impact. I just wanted to remind you of the energy exemption that you have on the revenue limit in 2012, 13, the year you just ended. You passed an energy exemption resolution, which allowed you to borrow $21.5 million. What I wanted to just bring up is that each year, the board must pass a resolution off of continuing this authorization. So at the next board meeting, I'll have a resolution as part of, you'll have like three resolutions, to approve a budget, to approve a tax levy, and to continue with the energy exemption resolution. And I talked some about some of these things already in the health insurance one, but of the reconciliation was reducing purchased services by $289,000. And I'm still working on getting a breakdown of that for you, is one of the questions at the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting, but we did reduce that amount by $111,000 already. And part of that was just taking a look at what we actually spent versus budget last year, and we were able to reduce the 13, 14 budget just by looking at what some of the actuals that we spent. And I'll get a better breakdown of that for you. That's in the budget. The number 22 was the health insurance deductible. As I just said, that's the 250, 500 still in this budget. There was a custodian position that was recommended to be cut because someone left at West High School, and then we added a position at Oak Lawn, so that was, that was a wash, but we'd still like to add that custodian that resigned from West back. That's actually already in the budget. And then finally, keeping the employee health contribution at 15% in the budget. The budget reconciliation list called for using fund balance. This budget that's presented to you does not, but I do have to remind you that we'll be bringing forward a transportation recommendation to you to fix some of the transportation issues that we've had. That will probably end up coming out of fund balance. And, oh, I guess I said 324. 342 is the approximate savings between people either resigning or retiring and the new people added with their new salaries. There aren't, there aren't any other expenditure savings that we have at this point. That's what we know as of right now.
And the good news is, we are coming in right on target and being able to, with the exception of that transportation question, be able to restore the fund balance for what we started with and what the board debated last year on contributing $1 million towards balancing this budget, and we'll be able to do it without that. And that's good news.
Any questions for Sue? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, resignations since 2008, broken down demographically by years of service. Mike Knall.
I've got a hard copy of this, because there's a lot of numbers here.
And we should state that as a request, that Director Herzog had asked last meeting, could we expand? And Mike went back and added years, which became an important figure in that because it showed a trend in the post Act 10 issue as well, that we're able to give a sense of what was it like before Act 10 and not just since Act 10. And that gives a very detailed picture of its impact. I would like to very much recognize Mike and his staff for all the work that went into doing this, but it's an issue that I've discussed with our legislators, and I will be really pleased to be able to share. We shared parts of this with Senator Goodix and with our state representatives to show that impact. And this work is valuable for you as board members to know and understand what happens with us and our competitor, competitor sister districts, but it is also very important for understanding for the community to know the impact of what happens with losing people.
Yeah, so looking at your document, if you start in the upper left-hand corner, and you look at the retirees over the last six years, you'll see 2008, 9, 10, pretty steady, mid-20s-ish. Act 10, 2011, jumped up almost 40% or so. 2012, 33, and then 2013 dropped to 15. Now, I do know that dropping to 15 was not a result of having employees, teachers not having teachers eligible for retirement. We still have quite a few teachers that are eligible for retirement. My instincts are telling me from what I read in the HR world and the world out there is that people are just having to work a little longer and staying in the workforce a little bit longer than what they may be used to. Moving into the middle box, resignations, 2008, 9, 10, 14, 16, 11. We only wish we had, we had those numbers today, so to speak, in the HR world here in Oshkosh. 2011 jumped up relative to Act 10, maybe. 2012 and 2013, we had 62 resignations. Now with that, with that number out there, I've also been made aware that other school districts experienced higher turnover in 2013 beyond what was normal in the previous years also. There just seems to be a lot of movement going on out there relative to people moving around with different districts. Once again, I think we've mentioned this before, but typically in the past, with the collective bargaining agreements, if you had 10 years' experience, maybe you started at step four, so you lost experience, and a lot of times you lost money making a move. The other piece is, is that, is that in the past, last on, first off was the concept when seniority was really the prevailing factor relative to somebody if there was going to be any type of reduction in force. And that's not necessarily so today. So there seems to be a lot more, a lot more movement out there. When you look at that third box up at the top, you can see the '08, '09, '10 numbers, but '11, '12, and '13, we're basically in the 70s with our retirement and our resignations. The big chart on the left here with all these numbers, we had to do that to be able to do what we have here on the right-hand side, and that's a lot easier to read. So when you look at the right-hand side, you look at resignations, and like Mr. Mack said, Dr. Herzog asked us to go back three years, we went back to 2008. And you can see that, if you look at the 2008 numbers, look at the 2009 numbers, 2010 numbers, '11, '12, and '13, you can see that the vast majority of teachers leave us in the first five years. First five years. And I'm going to get into the whys. The comment that I want to make here right at this point in time in this presentation is that the first five years, we invest a lot into their professional learning and their growth. And to be losing them is, is not healthy for our organization.
I've heard that trend for years, that teachers leave in the first five years. I've heard that for probably 20-some years, and they leave for a variety of reasons. A lot of times, they weren't quite sure why they got into teaching in the first place, and then they realize, I'm not sure I really like this. I mean, that's, that's kind of been a trend for quite some time.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
When we were talking about the budget issues, we were talking about having $342,000 extra because of the outgoing and the incoming. And the outgoing, I would assume, the reason that we're on the positive side is that their salaries were higher than what we're hiring in. However, that's not consistent with resignations within the first five years of service, because I would assume those people are not highly paid. In other words, people stay, the longer they stay, the more they get paid.
Correct. Yeah. So I think, I think it was Mr. Mack said earlier, that we thought it was going to be a much larger dollar figure for the teachers.
Okay, so it's not really that good.
But because that gap is much smaller, it ended up being $200,000 only.
Okay.
So if you turn the page.
We had dreams of $500,000, $600,000, $700,000, you know?
Walking on golden.
Dreams don't make it reality, so.
So turning the page, what we did here was listed basically all the reasons for years 1 through 5, 6 through 10, 11 through 15, and 16-plus, basically for you to look at. And then the little box down the right-hand lower corner, basically, overall, salary was the biggest number, you know, when they either put on your exit questionnaire, or I called them on the phone saying, hey, I'm just doing a brief exit interview, would you please share with me why you left the Oshkosh area school district? I want to see if there's any kind of theme out there that maybe we can address going forward. Salary came up quite often. As you can see, it came up, as we counted through this list about 30 times. Family came up 15, it was a pretty prevalent reason also, I want to get closer to family, dah, 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 dah. And the commute, I was able to shorten my commute. Now, there were some times it was like, I was able to shorten my commute so I could spend more time with my family, you know, whatever, so, but, but those were the three primary reasons. But coming back to Dr. Saganak here, when you said that people leave in the first five years, sometimes because they find out that the profession isn't there, that came up, I bet, maybe a couple times throughout my situation, as I looked at 2013 here anyway. And I also think that your research is correct. However, I think it's, I don't think the turnover rate is quite as high in the Midwest as maybe some of the other areas of the nation. Is that true too, Kelly?
I think that's possible. I mean, I remember when I originally heard that percentage, I was living in the South, and so it could be much different down there.
So basically, this is, you know, this was a very good study. This was, was very interesting. I think, I think we learned, A, that we had a high number of people leave us, resign this year, but other districts have had a lot of turnover also. B, we learned that most people leave us in the first five years, which the research would also show out there, first five years. C, the three predominant reasons why they leave us, salary, family, commute. Not much we can probably do, a lot about family, not much we can probably do about the commute situation. But I think salary is something we're going to have to address going forward. You know, there's sometimes, there's some significant dollars that people are able to make just going north or south of us, and east and west, so. Any other, any questions, any thoughts? Barb?
I want to thank you for putting this together. I know that I only made the request two weeks ago, and I think it's great you were able to pull the data together going back to 2008 so we could see trends, because trends usually take at least four years to five years' worth of data. And I think we would have missed some things if we didn't have that. So I want to thank you and your staff for pulling that together. My second question is, on the second sheet, which talks about reasons for resignations, how did you get those data? Did you call people? Did they fill out surveys? How did you obtain the data?
Two things. Yep, two things. We have, we have an exit questionnaire that we send out with every employee that leaves us and ask them to fill it out and bring it back. So those that did return it, we reviewed those and documented whatever information we could. Those that didn't return it, yep, I picked up the phone, I'm in here on the weekends and making those phone calls and just trying to connect with those people and just saying, I'm trying to do a mini, mini exit interview and just looking to see if there's any trend or any, any data that could help us going forward with Oshkosh, and if you tell me your story as to why you left. And people were very open and honest, and I think they, I think they actually felt pretty good about being asked a little bit of information about why they left and being able to share. So that was basically how we compiled the data.
One of the things that is unique and different today because of post-Act 10 era is also that many, either many contracts, master agreements, or internal social pressure limited where an individual could be placed on the salary schedule when they came, when they were being recruited from one district to another. And that governed and it reduced the incentive for a person to move, because maybe only recognized they might have eight, 10 years of experience, and they might be only given credit for three or four. Well, that, that was a disincentive. Under today's era, the control and management of that rests exclusively with management as to how badly they want an individual to come. And there's no one there that restricts them from offering the price that will bring them to the district. And that, that increases the margin that individuals then can make in new money in a new district if, because of their license and because of their specialty area that they can be recruited for. And that under, I clearly would see that as one of the major factors, that it's a whole different environment today because of that flexibility for employers to offer what the market will bear as opposed to what the internal restrictions or past language within, and there were many master agreements that did specifically identify how many years could be recognized from the outside. And so that is a significant variable. And with that no longer in place, it has also given us flexibility in trying to recruit individuals, but at the same time, we also are paying the price by losing good quality individuals to other districts because of that. So it's, it is, it's a whole new world out there that is market-driven as opposed to contractually driven.
I spent some time today looking at board policies, not because I was bored, but because I was interested. And I knew there was an exit questionnaire, which I pulled out, which is Board Policy 536.6, was adopted in June of this year. And as I was looking at the, kind of the multiple choice type responses that people might give as to their satisfaction with work-related things, I did some further digging. I'm always interested in what motivates people to do whatever. So I was reminded of a motivation theorist by the name of Frederick Hertzberg, who's widely quoted in the literature. His work primarily was in the world of business. And he basically has a two-stage theory, maybe some of you are familiar with this. One, he calls hygiene factors, and if those are missing, people are usually not satisfied in their work setting. So when I, when I looked at the exit survey and I started reading through those, I thought, oh my gosh, those fit very well in Hertzberg's theory either as hygiene factors, which are the things, if you don't have those as a foundation, people are not going to be happy in the work setting. As compared to the motivators, achievement, the work itself, they really like what they're doing, and so on. But your data, Mr. Knall, show, for example, that salary was cited by many people, particularly those in the first five to 10 years of employment. There was one who referenced a principle as an issue. You see family or personal life on here, so if there are issues with family life and people live in a different community than Oshkosh and they can't go to their children's ballgames, and if their child is sick and they work in Oshkosh, but the child is in another community, that's an issue. So I think this, this theory, although it's widely quoted in the literature, and even though Dr. Hertzberg himself passed away in the year 2000, this is still used in a lot of business circles to talk about motivation in the workplace. So I think we can kind of superimpose here this theory on top of this questionnaire, because it's a match. You can more or less take everything on this exit survey and put it in the top part of the rocket ship here or the base. And if you don't have those pieces in the base, which have been identified in the reasons for people leaving, they're a problem.
Well, I must admit, I can't take any credit for that exit questionnaire. That probably was John Sprainer's work. That preceded my time.
Well, whoever did it, it was well done. Thank you.
But when I did look at that and compared it with other districts, it was well done compared to other districts too. So, but it's also good to hear what you had to say, Barb, so.
Just for my own information, about what percentage of those questions, what percentage of the people that left filled out the questionnaire?
Well, I'm going to take a shot at that, 33, one-third.
Okay. A little rusty at the call.
Yes.
Okay.
It's not strong enough, I'll just put it that way.
Okay.
Yeah, to that point, if I can, when I see totals, you know, circling around 55, is that 55, roughly speaking out of, say, 77, 2013, like two-thirds responded one way or another, phone or?
Well, those were the three reasons that were most prevalent.
Gotcha. One beyond that that aren't enumerated?
Yes. There's other pieces in here, like this person preferred a smaller school, so went to children. I think Kelly mentioned a couple, a couple people left because they decided to go back to school and try something else. But, you know, those were sporadic, so I didn't put those in. Those are the three predominant reasons.
Gotcha, okay. May I ask too, maybe Mr. Mack, this one for you. This is very helpful data, thank you for that. Of course, the final question, and that's at least to my mind, is what does it mean? What are the implications of higher turnover than we've had historically? And there, you know, I had no sense, and I wondered how we best can get to the root of that question.
Sure. Well, part of it is eventually looking at rebuilding a compensation plan that reflects getting dollars in the right place with the right motivation for individuals and for it to be more responsive to what the market is. I think market adjustments are going to be critical to our future compensation plan with flexibility. That does not mean that in 2015, one market, it might be one, one-ish of license or specialty area. In 2020, we will need to adjust because the market is different for each of those. And our friends from the Chamber of Commerce and the business industry say, well, that's the way. the way we have to operate because if there's a surplus of engineers, we can pay at a different price than if there's a shortage of engineers. And in a similar fashion, we'll have to look at that. But the other is that we do need to deal significantly with our entry level regardless of field, our need and need to recruit when we're thousands of dollars below our sister districts, need structural reform in a means that is meaningful so that we can get quality people here to be then incentivized, incentivized for future development. You've got to get them in the door. And that's across the board. That's a critical issue. So there are two very big parts of that. And one is the structural issues that we're dealing with right now. I'm looking at trying to develop a compensation plan that creates an incentive for individuals to stay with us. But the other part is creating an incentive for people to come with us in the first place.
I guess I would put that this is going to be no mean feat either. If you look at page two, you've got pretty good, I mean, 18,000, 6,000, 7,000, 16, 13, 8, 10. I mean, these are not small dollar amounts per individual and competing on the scale is going to require, is going to require more than just salary. We're going to have to figure out what else we can do to compete.
And part of what we have to deal with at the same time is the fact that we're not starting from scratch. We have a whole set of employees, you know, that we want to retain and keep here now that are long-term employees. And the issue has to be not just to focus on new, but to retain those we have as well as deal with significant market adjustments in order to keep people here. So there really are three major variables. Attention to the issues of retention, to keep long-term career, people that we've trained and worked hard to prepare for delivering instruction to our children. But at the same time, the criticalness of then dealing with new markets and retaining those new individuals.
And I would offer, that's where those motivators from Hertzberg would be relevant. That is, providing professional growth. And I know in the upcoming budget that the board will be voting on in the, not to, in the, shortly, provides for additional dollars for professional development for staff. And I think that's really critical. The opportunity to advance, whether that's into some other position in the district, hopefully, whether that's, or work itself, if somebody's a classroom teacher and they'd rather be a media specialist or they'd like to become an IST, is that the correct language? Recognition of some sort, just not necessarily expensive things, but various ways of recognizing staff, all staff, for a job well done. And then the achievement itself, them knowing that those students that they're working with have achieved and getting some kind of recognition for that. So I think there are some applications that could be extended from this theory. There are other theories out there too on motivation, if you like Maslow, that's another good one, but Abraham Maslow. But there are folks out there that you could draw ideas from and research and the literature would also be helpful in defining that.
And as we're working with Patel for Kids, that is the focus that we're exactly looking at in career pass and career reinforcement and career growth because that chart is exactly along the way that we're looking at is trying to establish a compensation plan that frankly does reflect that almost identically, so.
Any other questions for Mike?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four, District-wide Data and Accountability Report, Julie Moser.
All right. Good evening. In your board packets or in your folder, you have the annual report that was given to, given to the community on September 19th, and so we'll refer to that during the presentations. So tonight, we are going to be talking about data and accountability. If you recall from several of our presentations to the board about data and accountability, this is not just being looked at at the local levels, this is also being looked at at the state level. And Superintendent Tony Evers has put forth his strategic plan or his Agenda 2017, and assessments and data systems is one of the key elements of that, and we'll be tagging off of that this evening. You've seen this graphic before and we've been using this graphic with staff that we all need to be pulling in the same directions. And the levels and layers of accountability are pulling from the state to the district to the school level and to the classroom level. And that, as we're talking about this and as we go into other presentations this evening, that we really want to be pulling all in the same direction. We want to be working smarter, not harder. And so if you notice on the graphic on the screen, we are going to be concentrating tonight on district-wide indicators. So the first part we're going to talk about is accountability. How did the Oshkosh area school district and our schools perform when it comes to the state report card? Since the last time we have done workshop sessions on September 17th, the statewide report cards were released. And this school year, districts, not only schools but also districts, were given a report card. The Oshkosh area school district scored, had an accountability score of 71.3. Now, when we start talking about accountability scores and we look at that for the districts and for schools, this is not a percent, but it is a rating. And then that number puts each of the school districts or if your school in a category. So as you can see up here, everybody's given an accountability score, which then places you in the category. The Oshkosh area school district falls in the meets expectation category. Then if you look to the right on the report card, that accountability score is made up of four factors, student achievement, student growth, closing gaps, and on track and post-secondary readiness. And so those numbers are crunched into a formula that ends up giving us an accountability score. You're going to notice that I have circled in red in the area, the closing gaps. And in those four key areas, closing gaps is the area that we scored below the state average when looking at that. And that's going to be important as we start to look at our district-wide or other district-wide indicators because that's going to be a common theme. And I think we've known for many years, that is something that we've been working towards, is closing achievement gaps within our subgroups between our economically disadvantaged students, non-economically disadvantaged, et cetera. Also, on any of the report cards, whether it's the school or the district report card, in the lower left-hand corner, you're going to see the demographic information. And on the right-hand side, you are going to see all of the previous year's WKCE scores from the '08-'09 school year to the '12-'13 school year. If you recall from last year, all of those scores going back to the '08-'09 school year have been quote-unquote "nebbed" or adjusted for the new higher cut scores. Okay? So what we're used to seeing in the Oshkosh area school districts being the 80% or the 90% students achieving proficiency, being proficient or advanced because of those higher cut scores is now a little bit lower. And we anticipated that.
Julie, you were talking about the closing gaps is going to be an issue for us, but if you look at student growth, our scores there are even lower.
On student growth, we're, right, student growth, we're at 62.8, but I'm referring to when compared to the, when compared to the state. We're performing above the, we're performing above the state average on that. So, but you are absolutely correct. When we get a little bit further in, that's going to be one of the things that we're going to talk about, is growth is a major indicator whether schools are doing well or poorly when it comes to the accountability report.
Are they using WKCE to measure growth? Okay. So it's a one-time, they're just doing years here?
And, yep, we're going to, we're going to talk about that.
Okay.
And actually, let's take a look at the numbers. And I have, you, you got that separate, let's take a look at the numbers.
This is the blood pressure one.
This is my analogy I've been using with everybody, that when we are looking at these numbers and we're looking at accountability reports, think of this as like getting your blood pressure taken or getting your cholesterol score. Okay, that's a one-time, one-shot deal where you're going in and you're getting the number. And then once you have that number, then it's a starting point to have some further examinations or to investigate a little bit more, but it doesn't, it does not define you, it doesn't define a school. It gives you a point to start looking at, how can we improve? Or maybe I'm doing really well, what am I going to maintain? Or what am I going to continue doing? So we're going to take a little bit further look at the numbers. Okay. In your, in your community report, and actually that was reported out to the community on September 19th, you have this little insert here. In the upper right-hand corner of the insert is this, is this chart. And to me, this is probably the most important chart or part of this rather than the actual numbers that each of the schools are looking at. Because it's really saying, how are our numbers doing? Just like if you would go to the doctor, they say, this is where you were last time, this is where you are this time. And we're looking at major categories. We're not looking at specific numbers because going up a half a point or going up a tenth of a point doesn't make that much a difference. We're talking about categories. And in the Oshkosh area school district, we had five schools that went up a category, which is, that's statistically significant. And then we also had three schools that went down a category. So we're saying, okay, what's going on with, what's going on with those schools? And then listed below is where our schools are over the spectrum of the categories from significantly exceeds expectations to exceeds. We have nine schools that exceeds expectations, 10 that meets expectations, and we have two schools that meet few expectations. So you can see the whole spectrum there, but our schools are clustered in that, in that middle group, meets, meets and exceeds expectations, which we would expect. And the statewide, the statewide look at accountability scores also reflects that also. So when looking at that, when looking at that snapshot, this is what we found when we took a deeper dive into this, is that schools that are exceeding expectations and/or they moved up a category, it was because they had higher closing the gap scores or they had higher growth scores, which would, which would absolutely make sense. And those schools that were meeting few expectations or actually went down a category, their closing the gap scores dropped or they were low, their growth scores were dropped or low. They had possibly overall lower achievement scores, which that would also make sense. And they were below the state average in most of those, in most of those categories. And looking at these, you can take a deeper dive. I mean, there's, it's a 20-page report for the district, and then each of their schools have another 15-page report. And that is all accessible on the DPI website for the school report cards. And also, the individual school scores are also contained on the insert here that if you want to take a closer look at that. But really, we're looking at what are, what's the numbers telling us and where do we, where do we go from here? Now, I'm going to pause for a second because not only do we have our school report card here, another piece of accountability that we have for our school system is we're being held accountable to our strategic plan and the metrics behind the strategic plan. So how are we measuring our success when it comes to the strategic plan? When you look at the goals within, or the priority areas within the strategic plan, goal areas one, two, and three, most of the, most of the pieces that are going to be measured or are going to be held accountable for priorities one, two, and three are deliverables. There's something's going to be produced, a plan's going to be produced, something's going to be brought before you to maybe approve, et cetera. When you start to get into priority areas four and five, that's where you really start to get into metrics and student outcomes. In goal area four, when, around equity among schools, goal 4B actually has a very measurable metric, and that is, we should be establishing a standard practice in facilities and resources. And so part of the action steps under goal 4B is to say, okay, what are those standards of practices? Establish that criteria and then collect the data and get a baseline of what is the number of classrooms that are meeting that standard of practice? And that is being, that is being worked on right now. And so we should by May have that baseline data to then carry forward from there. Okay, so that'll be coming, but that's going to be a metric. Then in 4C, develop and implement a student at-risk plan. A little bit later this evening, Dr. Geigley is going to be presenting this, the at-risk and alternative education plan for the Oshkosh area school district. And the major metric or the measuring point for that is the number of students meeting dropout criteria, the numbers of students that are dropping out. And on the September 19th report to the community and at other times that we have talked with the community, people will look at that and go, 1%, that dropout rate, that's not that bad. So that's why we put the number 90 behind it because 1% may be in a, you know, when you look at 10,000 students, that's not that bad. But 90 students is 90 students too many to be leaving school and not completing high school. And so it's more important to look at the number of students that we're talking about rather than a percentage. So we have the number of students there. And Dr. Geigley will be outlining the steps and the areas that we're taking to make sure that we get that number even lower for the Oshkosh area school district. Goal area five, expand and strengthen, we have goal area 5A, expand and strengthen school community partnerships. We believe that in goal 5A, we're saying that if we do these things that come under priority five or within those goals, if we do these things, we are going to impact student learning or student data point or student achievement. And so under the goal 5A or priority area five, we are looking at student data points. And so the first one is graduation rate. And so for the most current information, 11-12, and we want to use the state reported numbers because that means we are using the same, it's like comparing apples and oranges. We want to do apples to apples and we want to be using the same criteria that's being used throughout the state. But we're at a 92.9% four-year cohort and going out, we can go out six years, we're giving them an opportunity to graduate within six years, we're at 91.6%. That can absolutely be improved because once again, you look at that and you go, hey, that's not too bad. If we're thinking about a grading scale, 92.9%, I think that's like a A, A-, right? Not too bad. But the thing is, is that behind there is 7% or 6%, how many students is that? And that's that many students too many. We want to increase that graduation rate. Decrease the percent of students meeting the truancy criteria. We know that if students aren't in school or engaged in school, that they're not learning. And so we want to drop that. And we believe, once again, by partnering with the community and providing comprehensive support services, that we can decrease those truancy rates. Then goal 5D, our metrics here is we're saying that if we're partnering with the community and we're offering those educational experiences to students and we are doing effective practices, we're really focusing on teaching and learning through a partnership, that we are going to push our metrics when it comes to math and when it comes to reading. And if you'll notice that we're, each place where there's an asterisk, that means we're above the state average. But the point that, that we really need to work on is, if you'll notice, for grade four reading, we are below the state average. And this is the first time that we have been below the state average when it comes to reading. And so that's going to be a theme coming up here in just a few minutes about focusing on reading. Also within goal 5D, we have our ACT scores. It came up at our community meeting about our data being valid and reliable and what data measures are we using. The ACT tends to be a very nationally recognized, valid and reliable metric. And so if we look at our ACT scores, we have this, this is for the class of 2013, and this would be the seniors that graduated from Oshkosh North, Oshkosh West, or any of our alternative programs. And you can see we are above the state average in all of those areas except for, except for English. You'll also notice the percent of students meeting all four college-ready benchmarks, that's 37%. And I'll be showing you some comparison with ACT to other districts in just a few minutes. But 37% of the students that took the ACT met those college and career readiness benchmarks. So I think we can improve that. Also under goal 5D, we have our self-reported, and this is the key here, this is self-reported, this is what our seniors side, the class of 2012, said that they were doing after graduation. And this is what they're self-reporting, and this is going to be coming up here in just a few minutes, is that this is what they're self-reporting, but my question is, is this what they're actually doing when they're leaving high school? Because it's kind of concerning me here, the miscellaneous with, I wonder what that means after high school miscellaneous stuff. So we're going to talk about that. Once again, we're saying that if we do these things, we're going to push these student data indicators, we're going to push these numbers. So going to goal 5D, we need to do, and this is part of the action steps, we absolutely need to do more work on metrics of the postgraduate plans and what students are doing. Because our biggest concern is, is that we know what students are self-reporting and choosing to do, but what are they actually doing and completing upon graduation? And that's what we're working on, is we're working on getting those data sources so that we can match that up. Because our goal would be, is that what students are self-reporting and what they're actually doing after graduation are going to match up because it means you have a plan and you actually went with your plan after graduation. And that's what we would hope college, career, and community ready would mean, is that they're actually executing that plan after high school. And so some of those metrics up there would be the participation in work-based learning, students earning industry certification, dual credits, transcripted credits, and then also the also, the number of students working with our post-secondary, to find out, how many students are needing remediation, once they get to the technical college, two-year community colleges, you know, the universities. Goal five E, this is a very measurable goal, and we have our latest numbers here for thirteen, fourteen, but we need to be reversing the current trend in open enrollment. And so you can see the trend numbers from oh eight, oh nine, to thirteen, fourteen. So our open enrollment in is up, and we've maintained a number of open enrollment out, but we really want to reverse that trend. And so, what we're saying is, is if we are, if we are working through those components of the strategic plan, then we are going to reverse those open enrollment trends. So, those are all, those are all the numbers, and those are all the metric pieces that we are measuring through the strategic plan, and through our accountability reports. So now the question does, is, how does the Ashkesh Area School District compare? Because it goes back to, back on September nineteenth, one of the audience members asked, well, how does that compare? That's nice to put those numbers up there, but I want, I wanna know, how do we compare? Well, there's some data metrics that we can actually compare, and there's other metrics that we can't compare, because it goes back to the apples and oranges piece, they're all fruit, but you gotta apples to apples, and oranges to oranges. So, and also then, what other data sources are we monitoring? So when we look at accountability scores, we're just going to be looking at the district accountability scores, and we took our, our neighbors in districts that are like us. And this is where, this is where Ashkesh Falls. So if you're looking at Kimberly, Nina, Appleton, Ashkesh Falls, right there in the middle, Eau Claire, Chaboygan, Fond du Lac, and Manasha. So you can see that we're right now in the, in the middle of the pack here, so to speak, when it comes to our accountability score and comparison. And then ACT, ACT is, is national, and we can take a look at this. And we have our composite ACT score for the school districts. And also, I put in there the percent tested, because you need to remember that the ACT right now is not a mandated test, and so only a certain percentage of the graduating class is taking the ACT. And that makes a difference. If we know anything about data, that the larger your sample size, and you're looking at averages or composite, that's going to bring that down. So we also included the percent tested along with our ACT composite score. And once again, we're above the state average, so we can see where that is, and we're, we're testing about the same percentage. This is gonna change next school year, because as of right now, the, the high school accountability assessment is going to be the explorer plan, and then the ACT junior year. So we're gonna, where it's gonna be a one hundred percent of our students will be tested, and we'll see where we go from, we go from there. So, so that's where the Ashkesh ranks, but what other data sources are we monitoring at the school level? So internally, this is what we're consistently monitoring district-wide. We have our developmental reading assessment, kindergarten through fifth grade, that we are monitoring fall, spring, and then in the winter, we do it for those students that need an additional data point, or we're looking for more information, we'll do that in the winter. PALS, which is early literacy screener, is now given, and that is mandated, that is a state test, and we have to do it, at 4K kindergarten and first grade. We have the scholastic reading inventory, which is given to our secondary students in sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, if we need it, our twelfth graders, we don't do the scholastic reading inventory with, but that would be our, our data point for reading with them. We have our advantage math recovery math assessments, and we use that district-wide to get instructional math, instructional math placements for students kindergarten through eighth grade. And we are currently working on and have in place common content area assessments, especially at the secondary level, that we are just now starting to work on. Other data points that we are closely monitoring, especially at the school level, is going back to attendance, truancy, our dropouts, our discipline and behavior, because those are all factors that are influencing how students are, are, are learning, and whether or not they're in the classroom, in order to be there for, for instruction. So, we have all this information, so what have we learned, and what is the data, what is the data telling us? So, our numbers. Literacy focus is needed at all grade levels, and you've heard me say this earlier, and in other board workshops, we need to be focused on literacy, and we are, and I'm gonna talk about, and Kim actually is up here to help us, talk about what those specific things are that we are doing. We continue, we need to continue to work towards closing achievement gaps in our subgroups. We still have achievement gaps, and we need to, we need to close those. Focus on college, career, and community readiness, because we want, once again, we want to make sure that students are matching up their plans and what they're actually doing after high school. And our internal measures, what we're finding out is that our internal measures are predicting and pointing to areas and needs of improvement. For example, our two schools this year that didn't meet, our two schools that meet few expectations, we knew ahead of time, or we predicted ahead of time, that they were possibly schools that were going to be in that accountability category. And, and so our internal measures are predicting where we're going to fall on accountability measures. So we're feeling confident in that. So action steps and needs based on our data, and what we're finding from monitoring the strategic plan, and from our accountability pieces. First of all, college and career, community-ready graduates. One of our action steps under goal five D is to, is to map K-12, our college and career and community continuum. It's, where are we teaching career and life skills? How are we assessing those career and life skills? What are we doing with work-based learning? And what does that, what does that look like across the whole spectrum of grades? And career exploration, starting with our families, going all the way to our students, making sure that everybody has a really clear picture and plan of what they're doing after high school. Soft skills and digital citizenship, we've really heard from our community, that soft skills and how we are, and how we are communicating, and how we are working with students, and that they're communicating is, is huge, and that we need to address that. So soft skills and digital citizenship. Continue and strengthen our UWO dual-credit course and offerings, and that's our CAP courses, that we need to continue to look at. Identify and collect those baseline datas, like we said, making sure that we have that plan and carry out that plan after graduation, making sure our data points match. And then our career pathways at each high school, in partnership with the Fox Valley Technical Colleges and businesses, and making sure that we have that direct entry into either, a direct entry into a course pathway post-secondary, or have an industry certification, so. Then, our data, how are, from there, how are we supporting our struggling schools? Or schools that are, you know, their data's pointing to that they have needs. We are intentionally placing staff and resources to support teaching and learning. We were very intentional when we were looking, we were matching staff up with their skill sets and the needs of the school. For example, at Jefferson Elementary School, Jefferson Elementary School is a one-to-one school with iPads. And so their instructional support teacher is also a tech coach, and so we intend that IST has a skill set within, with technology, and integrating technology into instruction. And so she was intentionally placed at that school for her skill set, if that makes sense. So we're really matching up skill sets with, with schools. Increase and intentional professional development. Dr. Herzog mentioned that there isn't, there has been, you know, dollars infused into our professional development, because we need to be intentional in that. Replicating effective practices from our high-performing schools. We have schools within our district that are schools of recognition, just as passed, just as passed yesterday. Actually, was it, oh my gosh, it was yesterday. Yesterday, Tuesday, we were down in Madison, where Washington Elementary, Webster Stanley Elementary, and Emmeline Cook Elementary Schools received schools of recognition awards down in Madison. And are we replicating and doing those effective practices that are proving, proving to be effective in each of those high-performing schools? Focus on layering interventions in the classroom and in the community, wrapping around and layering our interventions, not stopping and starting things, but layering those interventions so that we are supporting students, so that they are, they are able to learn in the classroom. Partnering with our community agencies to support social, emotional, and basic needs of a student, because sometimes, those things are getting in the way of our students in our struggling, in our schools. And then, I have there in pink, that no matter what school we are in, or who we are as professionals in the district, we need to be focusing on growth in the students, and focusing on growth in our professionals. Because if you go back to our accountability reports, that those growth scores, having high growth scores, and focusing on growing all of us, is really what's going to impact our student learning. In addition to that, we, at the central office level, or at our department level, we, curriculum instruction assessment, and Kim Brown has, Director of Learning, has joined me up here, because curriculum instruction and assessment are not separate things, we are a team. And we are now organizing as a team, and this graphic's a little hard to see, but we are taking all of our personnel that provide data-driven professional development, instructional leadership, supportive coaching, or our resource to our teachers, our professionals in the building, and we're bringing them all together, so that we are pulling all, once again, focused, and all pulling in one direction. And that includes our literacy and resource teachers, program support teachers within special education, our program support teachers in 4K, our IST teachers that support math, GT, and professional development, our instructional technology and information support teachers, formerly known as library and media specialists, our IT department and tech coaches pulling together, and our peer coaches, because every single one of those staff members support teaching and learning in our schools, and we all need to be pulling in that same direction. So, once again, we're organizing so that we're focused and pulling in that same direction. And then focus on, focusing on literacy. Our data's saying, we need to do this, so how are we doing this? We're doing this through the implementation of Common Core. Comprehensive, comprehensive literacy model training for all new kindergarten through fifth-grade teachers, and it's four days. So this goes back to Mike Knoll's report in your questions, that it says, how much is it costing for to, to, to turn over our new staff members, and especially at the elementary level? That's four days of full training, that we are, we are having to, to put into place with our new staff members, and we wanna do it, and we need to do it, but it is a cost to have that sub in to train those teachers. The comprehensive literacy model refresher training kindergarten, is two days, and it's kindergarten and first grade last year, and we're currently doing second and third grade, as well as our ELL and our special education teachers are also included in this. To focus on literacy, we have implemented, we have, we've asked our principals to implement a hundred-and-fifty-minute uninterrupted literacy block at K-5. And this one here is, there's been a lot of questions on this. And when we say uninterrupted, we're talking about, we're having a hundred-and-fifty minutes that you don't have to start and stop your instruction when it comes to reading, writing, and working as, as a reader, a writer, as a student, so.
And so that time is structured. It's not that the kids are sitting and reading for that hundred-and-fifty minutes. There are focus lessons where the teacher is modeling a lesson, there's times where they're doing shared reading, or shared writing with the teacher. What that means, shared reading is like the big book, or it can be, you know, an article or something that they are going through with the kids, where they're reading, but the kids are joining in, in some fashion, or participating. And shared writing, the same thing. Sometimes you'll hear the teacher say, I'm sharing the pen with the students. And then, of course, there's, you know, in guided reading, you may pull a small group in that fashion. Same thing with writing, you might be working with individuals or groups. So, some of that time is teacher-directed, and then some of that time is students, where they are going into different centers. And those centers could be where they're listening to a book on tape, it could be that they are writing a story, or they could be illustrating a picture. It really depends on the grade level and where they're at.
They could also be working on technology. They could be on their iPad, they could be on the Chrome, they could be in the computer lab, so instead of scheduling computer lab time, we are integrating technology into our, into our literacy and the things that we're doing, so that it's not an event, that you go to the computer lab, or you get out the iPads, or et cetera. It's, you are using technology to write, to create, and publish, to publish your work. Also, piggybacking off on that, our sixth grade, we are in the third year of one hundred minutes of literacy, two class periods, back-to-back, which is proving to be successful. In addition to that focus on literacy, we have partnered with the Fox Valley Writing Project for year-long professional development. It was at Washington Elementary School last year. And in this school year, Merrill Elementary is participating in that year-long professional development with Fox Valley Writing Project. And then Fox Valley Writing Project is holding its summary institute here, right in the Ashkesh Area School District. We are hoping that we will have Ashkesh Area School District teachers as the, as the participants in that workshop, just for us.
So how do, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I would just like, before we leave this slide, to remind that the modeling of, the improvements we're doing are modeled after our successful own schools within the district. Washington Elementary School was recognized yesterday at seven years of consecutive beating the odds. And we're, instead of going to expertise fifty miles away, and having only that be expertise, we need to look at our internal models of success. And, and each of the schools, Emmeline Cook had, has had success for multiple years as well, and we are using that as a model when we're looking at this uninterrupted literacy issue, that has raised some controversy. But if we don't look to successes on our own, it is absolutely ridiculous on our part to, to not work to those standards. And when we have that demonstrated success of, of four or five years, plus seven years of success at Washington, what difference did it make? Yes, it made a difference, because that was done beginning seven years ago.
For the, the kindergartners, and obviously, having received that email earlier this week, I guess I am curious to know, what, you know, you've got uninterrupted two and a half hours of time, and yes, you know, obviously, they're kindergartners, so they're not spending two and a half hours reading. But they also aren't able to go out to the playground, or do anything of that nature, to actually burn off any energy, or wake themselves up. They're kindergartners, two and a half hours is a long time. But I'm not, I'm not, yes, I realize it's K-5, but for the kindergartners themselves, how do you establish a, a workable program for two and a half hours of literacy, that you're purposefully not interrupting with some sort of release for the kids? You know, some sort of effort that allows the kids to go out and, and do something else?
So, K-5, we do talk about brain and body breaks, and those are type of movement things, and they can last just a few seconds to a full minute, but that's something that they incorporate throughout the day. So it could be, you know, standing up, and they might, you know, sing a song, or it might be moving from one area to another, so it's not that they're stagnant in one spot for that entire hundred-and-fifty minutes.
True, I guess, although I don't, you know, moving from the chair down to the circle or something like that, is a pretty small break for, for kids.
Bearing in mind with children in high, that have been success, that's been in practice at Washington for the years that we've had success at Washington. And, and that process is, is a very important part of that, that focus and not getting reorganized. If you spend any time in kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth grade, and even, or the amount of restart time, that sometimes has to go into instruction with children to get them back on task. Those are precious minutes. And when you're focused on a, a certain area, that being in, in the whole broad area of literacy, you're building an opportunity to not have restart minutes that become consumed during the day. And, and it is working across the district. And, and in the particular case of, of the correspondence you received, it's, it's actually working in that classroom as well, and with a very successful, good teacher. And the, the issue is that change is difficult, and sometimes, understanding, accepting change, even if it's for the best modeling in the district, we have to work towards that. Because if our goal is to focus in on changing the numbers that Julie just went through, sitting on your hands and saying, well, that's too bad, but we think it's okay to do what we've done in the past, isn't acceptable.
I guess I wasn't arguing the present against the past. I was simply trying to find out what it was that you were doing for two and a half hours, that was allowing the kids to maintain some kind of focus, rather than drifting off.
We're gonna have Deb Darling come up, too. She's our reading coordinator, and I think she could maybe enlighten all of us a little bit more, too.
Yeah, and as she, and as she's coming up, when we say uninterrupted, uninterrupted also means, in what Stan alluded to, the starting top, stop time, instead of having forty-five minutes, now we're gonna stop, you're going to go to art, or PE, or music, and then you, and then you're gonna come back and continue on with your next sixty minutes, or whatever. That's what we mean, but you're not breaking that up, and starting and stopping and going and doing other things, you're staying focused during that time. And so, Deb?
I think it's important just to say, first of all, that this will vary from day to day, in every cla, and from classroom to classroom. But an example might be, if, in that hundred-and-fifty minutes, the teacher might start out with a ten-minute phonics lesson, where you've got the whole class on the, on the rug, you're doing something with... you've got the whole class on the, on the rug, you're doing something with a pocket chart, and the kids are coming up and manipulating cards, and learning about sounds and letters, and how words work, or things like that. And then the students might go into small groups or individuals where they might be reading out of their bookbox. And granted, in kindergarten, many of the kids are reading the pictures and thinking about it, what they're, what's in the book. And the teacher might be pulling a small group, or pulling an individ, or sitting beside an individual child. And that might go on for ten to fifteen minutes, and over the course of the year, that'll extend to a half an hour or more as kids build their stamina. It won't be that way the beginning of the year. And then they'll make, the teacher will usually call a time, they'll mix it up, she'll maybe bring them back together, do another short lesson, they'll go back into the small group and individual work again. And they'll keep going back and forth between those kinds of things. And each time the students go into their individual or small group, they might be doing a little bit different task. One time might be reading from their bookbox, one might be listening on tape, one might be sitting down and, you know, doing some writing. And as they go through that, that'll be about ninety minutes, and then they'll transfer into doing the same kinds of things with writing. And again, as we said, it's this constant change. As the kids get up, they move around, they change the practices that they're doing. And it builds over time. As I said, you know, kindergarten, the beginning of the year, it won't look the same as it will at the end of the year, so.
The, the other part of this is that technology's integrated into all these pieces. So, when you're, when you're doing the shared readings, you could be, the students could be using the smart board during that time. They could be, when they go to their individual centers, they could be reading off their iPads, or off the Chromebook, or off an electronic reader. So there's all different types of things that are, that are going on and can be integrated in this. Once again, things that used to be, we used to stop, and now we're gonna go do computer time, are integrated right into that a hundred and fifty minutes, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yep.
I, I would encourage, I am just amazed, and because of the good work of our, our folks here at the table, I have spent considerable time in our primary classrooms watching and observing. The amount of preparation work that our teachers need to do to have that smooth transition and have it all moving, and to have each step along the way. And in students, once they've established the topic, the teacher, in a very brief comment, can say, "These students," and, and they may have different lists and different ways, or this group of students, or they may name the students, "are gonna do this activity now, this group of students are gonna do this activity, and these group, this group of students are gonna be with me, and this is what we're gonna do now." Smooth flow, consistent, fantastic. It, it's, it's like, it kinda reminds me of, of the order of a good marching band. Everybody knows where they're going and getting into the next, next position to be successful. And it's, it is something to behold, and it's to the credit of leadership, but it's the fantastic work of our primary teachers who are making that work every day.
Yeah. I, I wanna reiterate that, Stan. We have amazing elementary teachers. I mean, we, the, the work that they do every day is just, is amazing in how they work with, with children. And we, and we really wanna support, we really wanna support our teachers because it takes a lot of time and effort and support to be able to do this and to do it well. And we're asking a lot of them, when it comes to accountability and, and saying, you know, "We, we really wanna achieve these things with our students." It takes a lot, and we really want to support our teachers in that, because they are doing wonderful work. And so, to, to bring us back here, we increased in intentional support in literacy for all classroom teachers in the content areas 4K-12. We need to keep on that. This, as soon as we get our data back from PALS and our developmental reading assessment from the fall, we're gonna do a deep data dive and, and take a look at how are we, how are we doing with our current students, and what adjustments can we make for our current students this year. Increased disciplinary literacy professional development in grades six through twelve. We've talked about 4K-5, but reading, writing, listening, speaking, those skills and communication don't stop after fifth grade. We wanna keep working on that six through twelve. And integrate and leverage technology into literacy instruction 4K-5, and, and then also continuing on with that six-twelve, because our, our literacy, the way we communicate, read, write, speak, and listen, is, you know, is just integrated with technology. It's no longer an event, and we have to, we have to treat it that way. You know, speaking with all of these things, Kim and I are going to be coming forward with a proposal, and something that we want you to think about after, after this presentation, is that we would like to really increase the leadership within literacy, and to cut, we want our leadership to concentrate on that 4K-5 literacy component, because that's where we're really, we're struggling, and we know early literacy counts. And we're asking to, we're gonna be asking you to consider taking, converting the one-point FTE K-12 reading coordinator, which is Deb right now, and have her convert into just a 4K-5, 4K-5 literacy coordinator. And that, and we would ask to add an additional point-five FTE and have a six-twelve literacy coordinator, so that we can really have our leadership focus on that. And so that's something we, we're gonna bring forward, and want you to think about or, or consider based on the data today.
So I'm just gonna add a little bit there, too, as well. As far as the six-twelve literacy coordinator, the reason that's so important, as you can see, there's that increased disciplinary literacy. That's something that's been talked about. It used to be something that people were like, "Yep, that's nice to know, and maybe I might do that in the different subject areas," but now, we must do it. And so, we're, when we talk about disciplinary literacy, that's across all subject areas, six-twelve. It's not just literacy. So that's another reason we wanna focus. And then also, Deb has been very busy with the Common Core. There's a great deal there to help support. And now, as we are starting to add the PALS training in, or the, or the PALS testing in 4K kindergarten, first grade, and most likely second grade next year, we really need to be able to have somebody be able to analyze that information and use that within the schools in order to help the teachers understand what they do with that information. Because, yes, the data is nice, but unless you know what to do with that data, it doesn't help us move forward.
So, this is what we, we are saying to our teachers and our professional staff, is that, "Don't be afraid to give up the good and go for the great. We're, we're doing good things, but we, we wanna do great things." And, and we have some opportunities here, and so we're, we're asking you to support us in, in some of those opportunities as we work through the strategic plan, and as we look to improve teaching and learning in the Oshkosh Area School District. Any, any questions or other, other comments?
I do.
First of all, thank you for a wonderful report, very comprehensive and very interesting. I have a, I have a comment, and then I have some questions. The 2013 Annual Report to the Community for Oshkosh for Education lists me as representing the Board of Education. That is, that's not really accurate. I was appointed to that Oshkosh for Education Commission when I was not, before I was appointed to the Board, and I have stepped down, or I'm no longer a member of the, of the commission. Very interested in their work, but not a member. Okay, and moving on. You had shown some data regarding the number of students opting to attend school in another school district, and then those opting to come in. Do we have any data on how many of those students who have opted out are voucher students?
Actually, going to private schools based on, based on vouchers?
Yes.
We are keeping track of how many students are choosing a virtual program as out, but we, we do know where they go, and we can, we can disaggregate that into where, if they've gone to Prokeals or not. But the question's gonna be, is we're not gonna know whether they chose, had, they got a voucher or not, to choose to go to the Prokeal school.
And we, we maybe should just add to that. On the open enrollment plan, we're billed a, a figure for that, as opposed to the voucher plan, where it's a direct communicate, dollars from, from the state to the parents to offset that cost. So we don't become in the middle of that. And so, we've had no official communication on voucher options, students relating to that. And we, we do annually have a in and out between our, our non-public schools in the community. And, and, and our district, we get them back. We, some families choose in different years to have enrollment, but the voucher system has its impact. And, and we know that the numbers have to be fairly small in the community, because if you spread five hundred across the whole state for this first year, you know, the percentage-wise, I would, I would say that I'm absolutely certain it's less than ten, because even that would be surprising to have that number on the draw for, for two schools when there's the whole state to compete with.
Sure. I, I'm just concerned about the increased numbers of, of students opting to enroll elsewhere, who live in the district, because I'm sure you all are as well.
Good, good news is, is that it was steady from this year to last year, and we, we increased our number that opted in. The ratio is turning.
Okay. And then, when you were showing the district accountability scores, I think it would be helpful to show the percentage of free and reduced lunch. Work of people like Dr. Fenwick English, who's done a lot of work on curriculum, and what accounts for student test scores would suggest that one of the predictors is the percentage of students on free and reduced lunch. And that's significant. I know Deb has talked about this, Mrs. Zerling has talked about this in the past, Mrs. Vicman has talked about this in the past, where students who come from homes that don't have a lot of discretionary funds, don't expose their children to as many vocabulary words and, and vocabulary-rich experiences in those preschool years. So that's quite, I think that's quite, quite important to know. So that, maybe that's, then helps to find some strategies that can be used in those schools, so you can follow best practice in the Washingtons and the E. Cooks and so on. Next, the Fox Valley Writing Project has been a longstanding collaborative venture between area schools and UW-Oshkosh. I'm glad to see that's continuing. It's been around for at least twenty-five years, and I know teachers K-12 have been involved in that. I like your comments about the fact that literacy transcends all classrooms, and it's not just in the English teacher's hands at the secondary level. And lastly, that point-five literacy coordinator proposed for grades six through twelve, I'd personally like to see some breakdown in terms of some, at least, big picture elements that would go into a job description for that. Thank you.
Absolutely. And that would be the next thing coming forward, but just wanted, wanted, based on those needs, just wanted you to, to ponder that.
Thank you very much.
I had a question, specifically with regard to literacy. And I, I just wonder if I could ask you for sort of a gut-level sense of where we're at, where we're going. Because I, I agree with your assessment, having, you know, worked with many of our elementary teachers. I think they're fantastic, well-known in classrooms with them. I believe in face value, there's been great work and immensely competent, good people being there. So you wondered that, why, why would we be lagging in literacy? And I don't think, you know, it's the staffing, and I don't think it's the instruction. Is it poverty in free and reduced? Is it, are we in a geographic pocket of the country that is literacy, literally weak, or a high pocket of, say, substandard English, or some, you know, some geographic factor that might affect that? Or are we not especially illiterate, you know, place? Or might it be that, you know, I'm thinking of a radio interview I shared with a couple of board members and Mr. Mack. Are we thinking about literacy, and I'll, you know, I'm asking you for your input, are we thinking about broadly enough? Are we thinking about film and rap music, and wherever, however that plays across various media, and that, I don't have a sense, but I did, I can't understand why we would be lagging in literacy. And I guess I wondered how we address that, what degree of confidence you have that we're addressing that in a way that's gonna turn that.
I have to have to address something, because we started doing some, you saw the re-trains that we're doing kindergarten and first grade, and then this year we're focused on second and third grade. So Deb is the trainer, and she's going, and she also looks at the data, so I'm going to have to share that with you.
And I guess I would just say that, first of all, as Dr. Herzog mentioned, one thing to keep in mind is that our free and reduced lunch numbers have increased significantly. We have doubled them in just the last ten years, going from something around twenty percent of our students on free and reduced lunch to over forty percent as of last year. And that has, you know, so when you, when you think of that and look at the fact that we've at least remained steady, that's a pretty good indicator that we are doing some things right, absolutely. But also, we did, as Julie said, you know, we have to go from good to great. And we saw that just last year, when we worked with our kindergarten teachers, after they, after we started with the PALS test, we decided we needed to bring them in and just kind of, you know, give them that refresher course. They came in early in the year, and we saw a significant increase in the proficiency levels of our kindergarten students at the end of last year as compared to previous years. Like, the percent of students who were not proficient was cut in half, from close to thirty percent to less than twenty percent, so about seventeen percent, I believe it was. Now, granted, that is a one-year number, you know, but it's a, it's an indicator that when we really focus on what we're doing, we can make a significant impact very quickly. Like I said, we'll know with time if that is, if that was an anomaly, or if it was a real true indicator. But we do believe, based on also anecdotal feedback from teachers about the things that they started doing differently, that my sense is that that was a true reflection of what we saw. And I think it was just really getting people to stop and think and consider, is what I am doing with these students purposeful? But also keeping in mind that, as you said, we're talking about very young children, and we need to make sure it's developmentally appropriate as well. So it's that whole idea of going from good to great. We've been doing some good things. We need to keep doing some good things and really increase the impact of them.
But going back to what you had said, Steve, it's, demographics are a really good predictor of achievement, unless you intervene and you're purposeful in, in what you're doing. And so, our, our demographics have, have changed in Oshkosh over time. And so I think that's where you're seeing impact. So I don't think it has anything to do with our, what we value as far as education, or what we're doing within our community. We just, we have some more obstacles that we have to overcome, and we're putting things in place so that we can come over those obstacles, because, you know, we really believe all students can achieve those great things. And they, they have the opportunity to do that here in Oshkosh.
I guess maybe, at the bottom, my question would be, do we need to be doing even sort of greater things to intervene? For example, when I, when I'm in a, in a school, and I, and I hear from the teacher that eighty-two percent of our students have never been to Madison or Milwaukee, speaks something about the universe of knowledge and experience that our students have had. Is it conceivable we can have strong literary skills without, without having stood at the shores of, like, Michigan, or in some vast forest, or the Milwaukee Arab Museum? And I would suggest that, can literature be relevant without big ideas and big experiences personally added?
Right. And I think what you're referring to is background knowledge, and that's, that's another, you know, piece of research, is that, you know, children that are coming from homes of poverty do not, do not have that background knowledge that, that some of us take for granted. And so, yeah, having those experiences definitely are key. And, you know, we may, sometimes we may not be able to transport them to the Great Wall of China, or, you know, or even as far as Chicago. But the question is, is how could we be leveraging even technology if we can't transport them there in order to, to get those experiences or background knowledge? But, on the other hand, though, those experiences, real-life experiences don't replace, can't swap those out. I, I would say, yes, that probably has something to do with it.
I think you're looking through those experiences, you know, through a literary lens, right?
Yes, absolutely. Let's, let's write about it, let's read about it, let's communicate about it, et cetera. Yes. If we're okay, I think we're ready to turn, oh, wait, Emma has a question.
I guess just being inside of, like, the education, and I, I agree with a lot of the, the English below the ACT, and, like, just being below that kind of stuff. And I think that in, like, strengthening our reading as a student, I would like to see, like, more choice reading. Last year in my junior class, I had a choice reading day every Friday. And from my, my freshman year to my junior year last year, my SRI score was phenomenal, the jump. And then not reading all summer was a huge mistake for myself, because then I hit the ACT this September again, and my score had dropped. So I believe, I think it's good that you're incorporating the hundred and fifty minutes with the K through five. And I, like, I wish I would've had more of that as, in my age, but I think that we need to incorporate more of that into the high school, into the middle school, not just requiring you to read twenty minutes after school, you know, in class, so a teacher can sit and question you about the book. I think that's really key to how you're gonna make your reading grow, and see, like, the English scores and everything go up like that, is just, you know, choice reading and questioning about it. Because otherwise, the students won't take, I mean, unless you're more of a motivated student, they're not gonna take the time to read on their own. Because if you're forced to read a book in your English class that you just dread reading, you're not gonna wanna be more likely to pick up another book and go on with it. So.
You're hitting right on student engagement, and that is what all three of us are all about, is we want to see you excited about your experiences.
And then another thing with how you're saying, you know, keeping up with students through, if they, after college, if they go to college, if they do what they say. I believe that the junior meeting that I was in last year was very informational to me. And I think if I would've had another one senior year, and all of us in my senior class would have one, we'd be more likely to keep up with that kind of thing. Because, once again, if you're not that motivated- Because once again, if you're not that motivational student that's gonna sit at a computer by themselves and apply for college, some of us just aren't fortunate enough to have that motivation to do it. So I think that's where the counseling comes in, where we need to incorporate more of that to come together. So we can have that kind of, so we can see all those numbers rise, you know, whether it be going to a technical college or just a regular four-year university. So I think that's one of the bigger pictures is to be more engaged with our students when it comes to your future. Because every teacher wants to see a student with a good future.
Thank you.
Okay. Moreover, to what she was saying, basically, I totally agree. What happened was, like, my sophomore year, um, what happened was I didn't explore too much into reading because I wasn't too fond of it. But then I took the practice ACT and really reflecting how my reading wasn't the best. So I did take up, um, some, like, just like reading during the summer and stuff. And during this year with English Three Honors, um, as well, what I like that they're doing in the school is actually having, assigning you the reading, but actually in class, you're having deep discussions about, like, we're reading The Crucible right now. And like, we're actually having really deep conversations about it, which gets the students self-motivated. Because, I mean, when, when you go to a certain point of discussion where it gets deep, I believe that every student's gonna be somehow affected by that and engage, and like their, my class is pretty engaged. And I really like the idea of incorporating, stressing the individual with the actual reading. So, yeah. And I had one question, which was, uh, what characteristics are we doing good? And how can we make them better by leadership, um, from the, like, individual student?
So are you saying, like, what characteristics or what things that our Oshkosh Area School District students are doing very well? How can we do that?
That you see.
That's, that's a, that's a really good question. I would say, within those characteristics, being good self-advocates. When, when we, when we as adults ask you, um, what you need, you're usually, I mean, you have, you have some really good insight and we need to be better at asking you, um, what those needs are and what you need. Because just what you explained in your self-reflection there was, um, you know, was amazing and was spot on in what we're, we're thinking is going on. But actually continuing that and encouraging that from your peers is saying, really express what you need and be that, be that really good self-advocate. We need to expand on, you guys are motivated and engaged when you have choice. And we need to know what those choices are and where, where you want, where you want to go so that we can supply those opportunities and those choices to you. So I guess it's really given us your voice and your feedback and when you do that, we do listen, because we want you engaged.
I also agree with, um, ACT, having all your junior classes take that. Because going back to with the being on free and reduced lunch, the ACT isn't, is, it can be an expense to pay if you take it more than one time. You can take it up to 12 times and if you're that student, I mean, that's a couple hundred dollars. And so if your family, you know, you don't have that kind of financial support, I think it's good that they start offering it through school so you can kind of get the hang of it. You know, if you really want to put forth yourself into something that you need an ACT for, then it's definitely something that all students should have an option to take, not if you can afford it or not.
Very good point. Any other questions or something?
There are no other questions. I would just like to thank, um, all three of you for your outstanding work in, um, in the preparation. Part of what I truly enjoy in my work is being able to go out and observe what the impact is of what you heard here at the 5,000-foot level, not the 20 or 30,000, but to see it implemented in the classroom. And I would really encourage, um, parents in the audience or other, um, to, to learn what magnificent, um, orchestra conductors or elementary teachers are in making this work in the classroom successfully. Because that is making a difference and, um, and, uh, I'd like to just reflect a little bit on Steve's question. At a recent gathering of, um, some, uh, 25 school districts in the area, reporting and discussing with legislators the outcome of the state report card. The consensus and the word that came from every one of those districts was, um, show me, um, show me poverty and I'll show you the score that is predictable based on poverty. And that issue is, is a consistent one. And, uh, and, and then the, the real message that is coming out is that, um, to a greater extent, we, we don't have as much as a racial gap, we have a poverty gap. And, um, the issue that middle-class, um, and, um, and middle-class and upper-class, um, persons of color don't have, they don't have an achievement gap. It is, it is reflected in poverty and because of higher levels of poverty within minority families, we have a gap that then is reflected in race, but really it is a poverty gap. And that's really the issue we face on a daily basis in each one of our schools.
Thank you. We're gonna turn it over to the next workshop.
Thank you. All right. Number five, technology plan and goals, District Technology Team. Which I assume David Gunlock is going to be.
And a cast of thousands.
Nobody's seen it.
Really want to switch into those? All right. Yeah, come on up, Bob.
I didn't bring it up because I'm going to have to say so.
Okay. Um, we, you know, we know you've received a whole lot of information. And in case the student school board members haven't thought to ask, it doesn't always go this long. We use, this is quite a few workshops to have all in one shot. So it tends to be a lot of, uh, sit and get. But this one hopefully is gonna be, um, tie a lot together. Because it was really interesting as I sat in the back and kind of listened to some of the different workshops and some of the excellent questions posed by the board, as, as well as the student school board members, that, uh, you know, I kept thinking as we were going through our presentation, I think we have an answer for that one. I think we have an answer for this one. So there's, there's some exciting things on the horizon. I am, uh, obviously, Dave Gunlock, Deputy Superintendent. I am joined by a, not a cast of thousands, but certainly a, a important subset of our District Technology Team. This group, this group is, uh, is a subset of our District Tech Committee that's been spending quite a bit of time over the past few months putting together the technology plan. Now, um, just, just for reference sake, this is the existing tech plan. And Bob informed me this is half, right? It's about half of it. That's the existing technology plan that was, was in place over the past three years. And we've successfully completed a vast majority of that, that work that's in there. The new technology plan is gonna be sort of that on a diet. It's gonna be a little bit more focused, more aligned with the strategic plan, which is a good thing. Before we get really started, what I'd like to do is have everybody kind of go around and introduce who you are and what your role is within the district, just so you can get a flavor for who's here presenting today. So, Bob, you can start.
I'm Bob McMahon, North High School Instructional Technology and Information Specialist and District Coordinator of the program.
I'm Phil Moiser. I'm at It Is Now at Oakland. Only faces from there and Reed and Roosevelt.
I'm Tara Perry. I teach third grade at Merrill Elementary.
I'm Kristy Levy. I'm an English teacher at Oshkosh West.
I'm Lexi Balligan of Lot Roswell Elementary.
I'm Jesse and an English teacher at Oshkosh West.
I'm Anne Stupani, Instructional Technology and Support Specialist at Merrill Mill, Merrill Elementary and Oakland Elementary.
I'm Sarah Fulkert, Principal at Merrill Elementary and Elvis Turner School.
Just a brief overview of what we're gonna talk about today. We're gonna talk a little bit about the technology plan process and timelines. We have a TED Talk that Kelly was nice enough to send to me that actually nailed it, exactly what some of the things that we were trying to do. It was, it was incredibly serendipitous because we were sitting down, getting ready to do the presentation. We thought, we really need a kicker to start this off. And within about 10 minutes of that, I got your email, so it was really perfect. We're gonna do a very brief research synopsis to let you know what some of our research team has been looking at. We're gonna talk a little bit about the tech standards that we are aligning, not only what our students are going to be doing, but also what our staff, administrators and tech coaches would be doing. We're gonna show you the data that we collected from Oshkosh that helped inform the creation of some of these goals. We'll then go into the instructional and operation goals. They really are divided into two camps. The instructional goals are the more, in my view, the more interesting ones. The operational ones are certainly interesting to the technology services team, but not always as much to others. We're gonna talk very briefly about change and innovation and how we get there. And then we have a proposal to share with you to address the first of the instructional tech goals. So that's, that's an overview. This is just a look at the entire technology team. We kept it under 30 members, but as you can see, it has a broad representation of administration, elementary, middle, high, as well as our It Is members, uh, which are formerly our media specialists. Every one of those is also on the team because they, they bring great leadership to that. We also, as you can see here, and I know it's a little hard to see when you zoom in. We broke these teams out into various subgroups. One worked on research, needs assessment and data. One worked on school library media and common school funds, a very important part of the program. One of them worked on budget. One worked on curriculum integration. That was the biggest group. And then authors, policy, infrastructure and graphic design. That was a very exciting group. That, uh, we also had a team working on that. So that is how the team was divided. And with that, I'll turn over the tech plan process to Tara. You can use that if you wish.
So as you can see, this is what we have, the half of it. Cumbersome, and as a technology plan, you would think, boy, it should be using some technology. The new technology plan is here. Is now a link and this is something that all districts will have to do. And across the top are different and various tabs that you can click on. For example, our needs. Different things that we've done. We have our strategic plan that's linked here. We have different, um, assessments that we've done that are linked here that you can easily get to rather than trying to search and find it in a binder. It's very streamlined, very easy to use, very user-friendly. And again, you, we have our library tabs up here that you can go to, talks about the different things that we have. So everything that's in this book is on this plan. It's pretty simple.
And actually, the presentation that we're going through with you today, you've, you were emailed a short time ago. So you'll be able to have all these slides, all the links that are associated with it, et cetera. So you, you have all that in your email.
As you can see by the dates up there, it started with preparation and research all the way back into January of this year. We got full force into it and over the summer months, we had three meetings, yeah, three meetings up there. Where we started with get to know each other, divided up into teams. As you saw on the spreadsheet that they presented the different team groups that we had. We then started building on developing our research, developing our plans. And then now we're pre-designing to the board. And then we'll be getting, regrouping during another meeting to find two in our plans, putting the information up on the document and then presenting, coming back in December and presenting the full plan. So it was a big group and everybody worked well together.
And the, what we're presenting to you tonight is just the goals portion, which of course is the foundation for the whole plan. But that's, the, the other details as far as common school funds, the library media portion of the plan, some of the more details around the needs assessment, that'll be coming up at a subsequent workshop. So at this time, what we'd like you to do is just watch, we're, we're not gonna go through the whole thing because I'm gonna give you a little homework, uh, but just to show you a little bit about, uh, the TED Talk on extracurricular empowerment.
So we're used to seeing headlines like these when we think about teens and technology, right? Cyberbullying, sexting, cellphone misuse and other problems associated with teens and tech. But I want to tell you a different story about youth and technology. I want to tell you a story about a nine-year-old named Martha. Martha lives in Scotland and every day she looks at her school lunch and she says, you know, this isn't very appealing. And in fact, there's not much here. I'm still hungry. And so she starts taking pictures of her lunch. And like a good digital citizenship these days, she starts a blog and she starts posting pictures. And like the budding foodie that she is, she starts reading her lunches, right? So six out of 10 on the foodometer. Four out of 10 on the health rating. And the ever crucial, pieces of hair? Zero. All right? Here's another one. Here's her missed pasta. So eight out of 10 on the foodometer, five out of 10 on the health rating, pieces of hair, literally still in the clear. And interesting starts to happen. Interesting things starts to happen. Some people start paying attention, right? So after just a few weeks, Martha realizes, hey, my dad told me I now have 42,000 hits on this blog. I really hope one of them is the famous chef Jimmy Oliver. And of course, because the internet is the internet, within 24 hours she had a tweet from him. And within a week, she had a signed copy of his book. So Martha keeps blogging, right? So here's her next meal. And unfortunately, her pieces of hair streak is broken. And other foodies start sending pictures of their lunch. So here's one from Taiwan. Look what we get for lunch. And here's one from Canada. And here's one from the Czech Republic. And by now, most Americans are thinking, look, they use real dishes. So Martha keeps getting more attention. She gets invited to join another chef, Nick Neare, on his cooking show. And they have a big conversation with a bunch of other important people around Scotland about the quality of school lunches. The newspapers covered the story. And unfortunately, what should have been a high moment for Martha quickly becomes a low moment because the next day, she's told by her head teacher, the head of the school, that the school council, what we would call the school board, has decreed that she is no longer allowed to take pictures of her school lunch. And of course, the internet being the internet, there was a rapid outcry, right? Jamie Oliver and others tweeting support and sharing their support. And pretty soon, the council is forced to back down and actually do the right thing, which it should have done all the time. Which is that instead of trying to censor Martha, what she, what they do instead is they actually start taking a hard look at the quality of the school lunches they're feeding their kids. And they start earning victories in terms of being able to get more food, more healthy food and so on. Now things really start snowballing. Pretty soon, Martha gets to meet Jamie Oliver in person. She shows up on BBC. She starts winning awards left and right, like Human Rights Young Person of the Year, Public Campaigner of the Year and so on. She even gets to meet Bean. And most importantly, she uses her platform to raise over 200,000 US dollars, which she then gives to a group called Mary's Meals, which builds a kitchen in Malawi and uses it to help the food insecure. And the wonderful thing about the world that we live in now is that there are many, many Martins out there. There's Emma, who, not content with blogging at age 13, decides that she needs to make a documentary profiling girls' bedrooms as a manifestation of identity formation. There's Josh, a middle schooler in Iowa, who makes voice narrated Pokemon walkthrough videos and is so good at it that by the time he graduates high school, he's got 130,000 regular subscribers on his YouTube channel, 83 million total views and a six-figure salary heading into college. There's Tabby, who at the age of 16 decides that she and her friends just absolutely must create what is now a highly acclaimed online magazine called Rookie. There's Nick, who at age 15 creates an app and at age 17 sells it to Yahoo for 30 million. There's Maude, who even though she's just a high school sophomore, has completely and utterly mastered the world of social media. 169,000 Twitter followers.
Okay. So if you want to see the rest, it's gonna be in your packet. You can go, uh, click on the link and watch the rest of it. And the rest of it is just as good as the beginning part of it. So I've heard Scott speak on numerous occasions. Uh, he, he's an amazing guy. Uh, I strongly suggest anybody who's interested in this sort of thing to follow him on Twitter. He posts fantastic information. But now, we're gonna hear from some of our own students and teachers. So, come on up.
One of the things that I really love about talks like Scott McLeod's is that it shows us what kids are capable of. But I think that sometimes even as educators, we forget that our kids are capable of those same things. And so sometimes we tend to watch these and say, well, those are really gifted kids. And that's a unique circumstance. and that's a unique circumstance, and that's not really what we're working with on a daily basis. And I'm here to argue that our kids are all capable of those things, and they're just waiting for us to give them a chance to show us. And so I brought Emma McAllister with us today, who is a student in our school district. She goes to Ashgash West High School, and she wants to share some of the things that she and her classmates are working on that align with what Scott MacLeod is talking about really nicely.
Hi, I'm Emma McAllister. I'm from, I'm a sophomore at Ashgash West, and technology is like a huge part of my life. I've been interested in filmmaking since about first grade, and two years ago, I started my own film label, Fly Away Films, and I've been making short films on there ever since. As a part of our English course, we were given the chance to engage in projects just like this. And, sorry, for my project, I'll be creating a short film and entering it into a festival. And I'd like to share some of the other projects that are being done and why technology is important to these projects.
To raise suicide awareness for teens in our community through music.
I'm becoming self-protected so I can express to the community how important our community is.
We are moving our fundraiser to raise awareness of a decline there.
And award scholarship to our efforts.
We're making the electric vehicle affordable for everyone.
We are martyring on Craigslist to better our economic situations.
I call this to be a published author.
I'll be pursuing my passion for filmmaking by creating a short film and entering it into a festival.
I'm creating a website highlighting the achievements of young people, helps to inspire other young people to realize their potential.
I would like to bring awareness to how abusive effects our generation.
I am focusing on raising awareness for people outside of the gender barrier.
We're creating t-shirts to raise warning awareness.
Technology such as YouTube will help high school students more easily access their future.
Of technology, I'll have to use resources that otherwise wouldn't have access to.
Without the technology in the classroom, we wouldn't have been able to sign on the survey that got over four hundred and fifty responses.
I'll be using social networking so that I can break the need along my journey.
I'll be using technology to research to create a more fashionable looking dress.
Technology is important because we get to research other suicide prevention programs and connect with others.
Hi, I'm Lexi, and I'm representing with Tara, part of the subcommittee that researched some of this information regarding technologies currently being used and what we're kind of looking at to share with you. Currently, we have one part-time tech coach in our district and eight instructional technology and information specialists. Those nine staff members service our entire school district. Over the past three years, we've been able to obtain many different technology tools. Some of our students are using Chromebooks, iPads. We have smartboards in our classrooms. Unfortunately, what the research is telling us is that giving tools to our teachers is not what's going to help us to successfully integrate it into our technology. What's more impactful is some of those secondary barriers, like their feeling of competency and their confidence in using the tools that's really impacting and changing the instruction. One of the studies that we took a look at really kind of laid out really well what we saw in most of the research out there, and this looked at a five-year project that looks at professional development for integrating technology in the classroom in over sixty-seven public schools in the city of New York. And what that looked at was the professional development opportunities and how the teachers access that information. What they found was that the professional development was really the key in getting the technology used inside of the classroom and really integrating it with the instruction. And Tara's actually going to share with you a little more details about some of that professional development and what that should look like to be effective.
So bulk of our research was spent on professional development and then the one-to-one technology initiative. And all of the research really said that for effective professional development, first it needs to change instruction, not just give the technology tool and change the students. The professional development needs to be sustainable, so it can't just happen one year, it can't just happen two years. It needs to be something that's ongoing and continuous to keep up with the new technology that happens really, really fast. Professional development needs to, we need that supportive, focused, and relevant piece, and to get that, you need a tech coach. A lot of times, teachers are going to the library media specialist, they're going to the principal, they're going to other classroom teachers, or they're using themselves, and not all the time do we have enough time to do that research on our own. We need other people to support us. When you have professional development that is embedded within the school system, it can be ongoing, it can be relevant, and it can be focused based on your classroom needs, your instruction needs. For the one-to-one findings, we found that three factors led to increased student achievement. The first was that it needed to be a uniform integration of technology tools. Equity was the biggest word out there, and equity does not mean equal. So some schools might have the iPads, some schools might have Chromebooks, tablets, whatever. The technology just needs to fit the students' needs and the school's needs. With the time for learning and collaboration for the teacher, that's again with that embedded professional development, meeting with a tech coach, meeting with small group, having time to plan collaborative, meaningful lessons using the technology. And then lastly, was that the technology is used daily for student collaboration and cooperative learning. One of our district tech team members said, you don't just want to give them a really expensive notebook, because if you don't let the students collaborate, work together, and not just with students in their classroom, but all over the world, really what you're giving them is a really expensive notebook that you can type on. But when they collaborate and they can use this to access other pieces and other things and other information from everywhere, you're giving them a bigger chance to succeed.
So the next question is, okay, so we've looked at the research. What are the standards out there, and are there a set of or a body of standards that we can hang our hat on? In the past, in Wisconsin especially, technology was over here. All the other learning was over here, and we knew that you couldn't, you know, be further from the truth of the way it should actually work. The advantage we have now is we have organizations like ISTI, which is the International Society for Technology in Education. It's the leading think tank for this type of research, and they've come up with a series of national educational technology standards that Jeff C. will talk about now.
So there are net standards that are set up for administrators, for tech coaches, for teachers, and we've got it listed last, but it's the most important piece of the puzzle is the students themselves. And we wanted to talk about this because there's a little bit of flow-through with these standards, so we're going to highlight two of them administratively and show you how it can reach all the way down to the student level. If you take a look at visionary leadership, having your central office administrators and your building-level administrators as well, being able to inspire all stakeholders and have that vision of purposeful change, and we've heard that at a lot of different levels. We heard Julie and Kim talking about having intention, being purposeful with these changes. With technology, it's no different, and when you have that vision at the top, that's something that feeds down into what would be tech coaches, and tech coaches also share that same vision. The tech coaches are able to provide staff with professional development, help them see how, here's how you might use Twitter in the classroom in a way that you're not seeing maybe people use regularly every day. Here's how people are using it in their workplace. Teachers don't always have the time to figure that out on their own, and like we heard before, we need tech coaches who can do that type of research and be able to come into a classroom and show a teacher, this is something that works, and it's very similar to what you're doing. If you'll give me a second here, I can maybe show you how, in some cases, your life can be made easier, but in other cases, look at the opportunities you can create for students when you do this. So that visionary leadership down through a tech coach, if we go all the way down to teachers, Dave, I think you've got to go two slides over, if you take a look at having that vision set, when that's in place and that vision and those expectations exist, you've got teachers who are actively engaging in professional growth, and they're using some of the technologies, tools they've learned about, whether it be Twitter, or Google Plus, or other avenues, to learn. You know, traditionally, as teachers, we have district in services, or we learn ourselves because we feel there's something that maybe we don't have, and being able to use a social network and collaborate with teachers around the world who are doing things that you are doing, and they maybe have some insights, having that vision allows teachers to even address that idea of professional growth in technology and in that area. Also, the idea of a digital age work and workplace, what does it look like in the real world, in the business world, when professionals are using technology, and what does it sometimes look like in our schools? And having teachers be able to see, these are the types of tools you should have available, and you should be able to model using them with and for your students. So if we slide one more piece down, Dave, this is where we end up seeing how that vision comes into play, because the idea, we really like the idea of creativity and innovation. If we want students to be makers, if we want students to be innovators, all these pieces have to exist, because right now, we've got a gap between an administrative vision that I think you have heard about quite a bit, and you've got teachers, and some are members of this district tech team, and teachers who are being unofficial tech coaches and trying to fill that gap, but we're also trying to teach all of our classes and lesson plan and do that, and the time isn't there to do that. So if we want students who are innovators, if we want students who are going to collaborate in a way that's meaningful, you know, some of the tools are in place. We have Google Apps, and not all of our teachers know as much about how to use that for collaboration as a tool. Some do, some don't, but again, that vision there, which goes through to tech coaches who can empower teachers, who in turn empower our students and open up an ability for them to use that collaboration tool. And the idea of digital citizenship, one of the things that we talked about, and I in fact had this conversation with my students just today, who's teaching you about Twitter and how to use it? And my students all look at each other, and we're teaching ourselves. Okay, and what are your models of good use of Twitter? I see what my friends do, and if you have followed Twitter feeds, you know that some of it is really good stuff and some of it not so good stuff, but there's no purposeful plan in place to help kids, and they're not always aware. It kind of does go on your permanent record. It used to be kind of the joke, it'll go on your permanent record. With social media, it is on your permanent record. Who's teaching our kids how to do this? So that vision piece slides all the way down, and the digital age workplace as well.
Now, on each of these slides, there is a link there. I mean, obviously, there's a lot more behind these than just the standards you see there, but if you go there, there's an actual web address, there's actually sub standards behind all of that, and it's quite robust. But the one thing we wanted to do to tie this together, one of the questions we anticipated coming from you or from the community was, okay, you got this Partnership for Twenty-First Century Skills, you got these national tech standards, you got this common core stuff, how does all this stuff interlink? And the answer to that question is it lays over each other quite nicely, because even if you look at some of the things that are in the nets for students, communication, collaboration, creativity, and innovation, critical thinking, those are sitting, and you can't really read it right up here. I can't even read it right up here, but it's right under the learning and innovation skills, the four Cs, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity. So these things do very much align with each other quite well as we've gone through, and that also aligns to the concept of the college and career readiness and soft skills that you heard earlier this evening. So it isn't one or the other, it really is all put together.
So we take a look at the next slide here, and the SAMR model is known, it's put out by Dr. Rubin, Pintura. It's a framework for technology implementation, and think of this as a blueprint for scaffolding technology integration into the education. Teachers can assess and evaluate technology used in the classroom. So let's just take a moment to look at the slide, and then I'll talk about it a little bit. If you look at the bottom level, that's substitution, and so the technology acts as a direct substitute, no functional changes. The next level is augmentation, which again is a substitute, but there is some functional improvement. Moving up the ladder, we get to the modification stage, which allows for a significant task redesign. And lastly, redefinition, which is our ultimate goal. The technology allows for the creation of new tasks previously inconceivable. And you'll notice the bottom two are lumped into the enhancement stage. The technology will enhance the learning, but there's not a lot of improvement on student outcomes. So we would like our teachers to be able to teach above the line, as we say, to move into that transformation stage where we see the significant student outcomes. And if you're looking for an example of what the substitution may be, it could be switching from the pen and paper to word processing, or moving to Google Docs as we embrace Google Apps, but there's not much difference besides doing things using a computer or a Chromebook. To augment in the next level, maybe they're taking a quiz electronically, and they're submitting that all online. Going to the modification stage, the heart of the task still remains the same, but students can insert comments into their Google Docs or audio. They could post their information on a blog and get peer feedback to allow that really rich cycle of students to peer edit. And then that redefinition, when you work with students across the world, it's real live time. They could collaborate with Google Docs, or they may not even choose to do a writing piece. They could respond with a video creation or an analysis of literacy item in another way.
You know, one example, you know, that we talked about a little bit was the idea we have a whole bunch of kids who haven't been to Madison or Milwaukee, and we talked about that. One of the things that we have the capability to do quite easily is why stop there? I mean, we can take them pretty much anywhere in the world through the telepresence rooms that we have in place, through just using something as simple as Google Hangout, as long as we can line up with somebody else in another country. So there's quite a few opportunities here for us to do that. The other thing we wanted to talk about was, that's really important in any tech plan, is find out where everybody's at. So what we did is we surveyed all of our staff. We got four-hundred-and-twenty-two responses out of roughly eight-hundred staff, which we thought was very good. You can see right there is the actual breakdown of how many people at each site. There's nothing really remarkable about that, but here's some of the answer, or the information. Do you want to go through these, or you just pull through them? Okay, go ahead.
So if you take a look at the individual questions, teachers use technology on a daily basis. Occasionally, it may be weekly, but they are using the technology. Looking at the roadblocks in the previous slides they had mentioned, the lack of technology was one of the primary roadblocks, and then the lack of personal knowledge of the technology. So that's one of the primary reasons why that embedded professional development is necessary to help the teachers use the technology we have. Students are using technology on a weekly or daily basis, and they have the same roadblocks that the teachers do. It's the lack of technology and then the lack of knowledge of the technology.
What's interesting there is the lack of equipment, but they actually identified lack of personal knowledge of technology twenty-three percent of the time. So they feel it, and it doesn't surprise me, because if you'll recall, a few years back, they didn't have access to as much technology as they do now, so there wasn't an opportunity access to as much technology as they do now, so there wasn't an opportunity to use it as often. This next slide, what kind of PD would you be interested in? The real teller of this slide is, first off, their iPads are heavy, doesn't surprise me because we have 2,000 of them in the district. Chromebooks, Google is another big piece of that, but what's really interesting is the bottom graph. You can either look at that and say, there's absolutely no agreement on anything because it's pretty much split even all four ways, or the fact that people may need it in different ways. Embedded in classroom time, meeting before school, after school or during prep. In other words, for each teacher, it may be different because it's almost an equal split there. What this tells me is we need to meet them where they're at. The OASD data feeds plan goals, what formats are you most interested in? There you got small group sessions and one-on-one sessions. So, you know, the once and done professional development, while it certainly may be efficient in a factory model, doesn't really work very well for us. What is your source for tech answers? This was really interesting. Our former library media specialist, that's 31% of the time where they get their answers from. But what was even more interesting than that was the classroom teachers were second and a very close third was themselves. So we do have a lot of self-education going on here. That's great for teaching you how to turn the thing on, that's not great for helping you redesign your lesson to take advantage of it.
I'd just like to interject here. As I was listening to people introduce themselves, I heard at least two people, Carol was one and I don't remember if it was the other one, you were the other one, who said, "You're in three schools." I don't know how that's possible in terms of meeting the needs of teachers when you're spending all this money on hardware and how are you gonna deliver the technology, professional development, and you're identified as the people they wanna work with and you're not there, you're in the other buildings? Just a comment.
Hold that thought, that's a really good thought, because we got an answer for that one.
I'm sure.
It's gonna foster that.
Yeah, I know.
The next piece is really about the national tech standards, are you familiar with them? About 35% of the people are, about 65% are not, which does not surprise me. We asked them about each one of these, and I don't know if you wanted to highlight any in particular, but we were just gonna kinda go through and you can see that people are mainly beginning or developing in each one of the teacher standards, which once again, does not surprise me. The one thing that we've talked about as a technology services team is how impressed we are with our own teachers and how much of this stuff they've learned on their own with little or no professional development from us. And they've done it because they're fantastic teachers and they're learners, and that has been a tremendous asset to us. But if you look at this, a lot of these standards, they just haven't had exposure to or they're just beginning to develop. And you can see a common theme, even if you don't read anything on there because you probably can't. If you look at each one of those, it's always beginning and developing. We're beginning and developing all the way across the board. So we obviously have some needs around that area. And the advantage of having this data is we can target it because we now know what our specific needs will be. So some of the quotes that we heard at the 2013 ISTI conference, the ISTI conference is an international conference, there's a lot of different people there, amazing speakers, all of our notes are online, they're under our professional development webpage. But here are just some interesting quotes that match up with some of the things you've said. "You don't plan for technology, you plan for learning." That was a quote at one of the sessions. "Technology is not the icing on the cake, it is the dough." Another quote from Adam Bello was, "A startup culture means embracing failure and cultivating curiosity." We don't do that very well always in education. "Innovation happens when you intersect fear with bravery," which is why we don't do that in education, because that's something that's difficult to do. If you wanna hear an amazing keynote, the link to his YouTube keynote is right there of what he did at ISTI. He has a really cool presentation style that I would love to mimic someday, but I don't think I can quite carry it off like he can. But it's really fascinating if you look at how he started and the most quotes I had in my notes came from his keynote. "You do not wanna put devices in school without doing PD first." These are all international folks. This one was the Alice Owen, she's the tech director for Irving, Texas. They were the first and the biggest one-to-one in the country. They've been doing it the longest. So they've stumbled, they've fallen, they did it back with pretty old $2,000 a shot laptops, so per kit. So they've, did I say Texas Instruments was in their town? So, yeah, that works good for them. Their quote was, "Professional development is key to making any one-to-one successful and the reason we were successful is that we invested a lot in our personnel." That's what they did. "We spend a lot of money on one-day entertainment for staff," that's what we used to call professional development. And it works up to a point, but it's never as effective as embedded PD. "The myth is we're gonna give students the information they need before they leave school." That was another big thing. "The value of information has steadily been dropping. The value of what you do with information has been steadily increasing." Seven billion hours a week are poured into the space of maximum engagement. This was Jamie Gonigal, she's one of the lead researchers on gaming and gamifying education. And they're looking at how much money and energy is spent on gaming and even gaming for learning and it's staggering. Her other quote that I really liked was, "The opposite of play isn't work, it's depression." So it was a really interesting keynote from there. So what that did is that gave us, we sat down as a group of 11 who had had the advantage of attending and presenting at that conference and we came up with these takeaways.
So when people ask what the ISTI experience is like, one of my favorite stories to tell them is that at the end of the conference, the conference organizers put it to the attendees to come up with one word that best described their experience and the word that won was invigorasting because you're exposed to so much every day, all day, and you have all of these wonderful ideas and ties to technology and you just kind of overload. And so part of our process when we came back as a team was to sit down after some time and sift through all of the things that we heard at the various sessions that we attended and try to figure out what the keys were. What things did we hear repeated over and over again from one session to the next? What seems to be the topics that were really on the forefront of everyone's minds? And this is what we came up with.
So along with attending with 18,000 other people at one conference, you saw a lot of blue boxes with the wireless, making sure everything worked. Our five takeaways really, there's a focus on changing the learning in pedagogy and not on the hardware, software and tools. It's really about what we are doing to change the learning. The second key takeaway was, initial and embedded professional development needs to be linked and collaboration is the key and this needs to be put in place using a sustainable lifecycle so it's efficient. Failure is a required option. We need to encourage people or our teachers to take the risks and fail forward. If you think of playing a video game for the first time, you don't conquer it right away, you keep going back and you try and try again. We need to do this with technology in our classrooms. The urgency needs to be there. We need to move at the speed of business rather than maybe the speed we're normally accustomed to in education. We need to be quicker. And finally, the nets for students, teachers and administrators and tech coaches need to be used as strands that flow through all of our curricular areas.
Our experiences at ISTI and these five takeaways that we came up with as a group really informed our instructional technology goals. And the instructional technology goals that we have really focus on how are we teaching? What is happening in the classrooms that incorporates technology and how is that best achieved? So our first instructional technology goal again is to provide embedded professional development, to assist teachers in leveraging and integrating district technology resources into their curriculum on a daily basis for instruction. This is going back to the idea of the tech coaches, the support provided within the building so that we're meeting teachers where they need us most, which is in their classroom. The technology coaches would provide opportunities for co-teaching models where a tech coach could actually teach alongside a classroom teacher so that they are including the best practice, all of those instructional things that we already know work really well and then augmenting it or enhancing it with the technology.
And I was struck by some of the conversations that we had earlier about the staff that we lose and the information, the research that Dr. Herzog presented on, why do people stay? Why can we keep people? And part of it was that idea of support. Well, this is key to that, that embedded professional development support because the one thing that can be incredibly frightening for a teacher is trying a new technology when you're not sure it's gonna work. I mean, when you look at what David and I were doing here before the board meeting, I was terrified, he wasn't gonna be able to get that NearPod thing working and finally I had to grab my iPad, log in as me, get it to work so he could go ahead and project it. That is not fun. And typically, when you're sitting there with 30 smiling faces looking at you that love it when it doesn't necessarily work out so well, it's even less fun. So it's one of these things where providing, making sure the technology's a tailwind, not a headwind, and that's what this is designed to do. And obviously, it also, with each one of these, we keyed it into which one of the strategic plan goals does it actually directly align to.
The next instructional technology goal again talks about the equity of learning activities by installing modern classroom technologies that support 21st century skills throughout the Ashgash area school district. Again, equity meaning that it's available to all, not necessarily the same tool, but the tool that is considered most effective in that particular setting. The next one, create a 21st century personalized learning system by providing all students with individualized access to technology resources. Again, providing them with the tools that fit their needs the best. Those are the types of opportunities that are gonna allow our students to do the things that Scott McCloud is talking about, to engage in those learning activities that we see our students just starting to take on now because they have some access in their classrooms.
And a personalized learning system really consists of three different things. You use the device or the tool to access information and that works great. You use the device to create information and knowledge, that works even better. But another key piece is that we talked about earlier today was this idea of formative assessment. Summitive assessments, while they sure are nice, don't do a lot for improving instruction. But formative assessments do because we have the assessment data while the kids are still sitting in front of me as a classroom teacher. You cannot do formative assessments in an effective way unless you're utilizing technology because it's the device the kids take the assessment on. It's the only way for you to assess and gather that data in real time and for us to capture it without spending a great deal of classroom time on that. It sort of makes it much more efficient. One example of this that we're using for teachers, we're using that exact same device when we go in and do walkthroughs for teacher evaluations. It's the same type of thing, it's a formative assessment.
The next one talks about increasing student access to hybridized and online courses and learning activities. And this is something that we are working on through our e-Academy program. We are starting to recognize that not all students learn in the same way and that technology is a really important part of reaching all of our students' needs and we're doing that through online courses currently. We have some hybrid courses that are running this semester also. We are also talking about ways that we can increase our offerings of hybrid classes and even kind of expanding what that might look like so that students might have a hybrid course where an English teacher is paired with an art teacher. And so they're looking at Romanticism both through a literary lens and an artistic lens by using some of these hybrid options that are available to us through our e-Academy. And then our last instructional technology goal is referencing the transition from Skyward Student Information System to Infinite Campus Student Information System, which is gonna be really crucial in providing our teachers with some really usable data in terms of what common core standards are we doing really well in, where are our kids lacking? And it will really allow us to look at individual students and what those students still need enrichment in and what they are doing really well.
So those are the instructional technology goals. The operational goals, I'm alone because it's operational, it's not as exciting as the other ones. But the first one is to support the OASD Emergency Response Plan with appropriate security technologies and school messaging. The board approved our contract with Infinite Campus. As part of that contract, we're gonna be going with Infinite Campus Messenger, which is a messaging system. So once we go to that, we will accomplish that goal. It's gonna be an incredible improvement for us, not just for emergency communications, but also for just building communications with our publics, which is gonna be great. Goal two, to relocate the OASD Northside Data Hub, that's the Lincoln Building, to a district-owned controlled facility. Aaron Van den Hoewel and I were, and Greg Lonka were there today at Lincoln. You would not recognize the place on the inside, it's pretty much been gutted and they're pretty much reconstructing everything new on the inside except for a little closet right in the center of it, which is where our data hub is. One of the things that we are doing is we're moving our hub out of there, not for any reason other than the fact we would like to have it in an OASD-owned and controlled facility. That way we can get access to it a little bit easier. We're actually gonna be moving that to Merrill Middle School. So it's just a basic case of pulling the fiber out of one spot, putting it in at the other spot and then hooking it back up and we're looking forward to that because that way, A, it's at a site of our own district and we also can control things like climate, power, et cetera, and our internet comes in there. So as you can see, as we move to cloud-based technologies, which is what you're all using right now, if it goes down, if the internet goes down, my presentation stops cold right now, so it becomes a very key piece of our infrastructure. Goal three, evaluate our OASD database systems and establish short and long-term plans to integrate the systems, adjust our processes and increase efficiency. We have a long way to go on this one. You've seen how long a way to go we have on this one and we are making great inroads, but it's gonna, you know, we're lifting the rock and what you find under the rock isn't always that pleasant. So we are constantly adjusting our processes and our data flow and we're making a lot of progress, so we're excited about where that's gonna be inside the next 12 months. The fourth goal is evaluate our infrastructure for long-term improvement needs based upon our tech plan goals. We cannot sit on our heels with the infrastructure we have. It is true that right now, based upon the foresight of the Board of Education and that sort of rebirth we started back in 2010, we have a state-of-the-art infrastructure in Ashgash. It's not gonna stay state-of-the-art if we don't always plan ahead and make sure we maintain it. So that's really what that goal is designed to do. So those are our technology goals. We talked a little bit, are we transacting or transforming? One of the things that Julie mentioned was the idea of transforming education, you know, and we thought, well, how do we really explain this? We thought we'd take something every person in Ashgash knows really well, the stop sign. You know, the stop sign does a great job of regulating traffic. And you know what? Everybody gets it, we all come to a stop and it works really, really well. Well, we could redesign the stop sign. We could put lights on it, in fact, solar-powered lights like that one there, but it really doesn't do anything other than improve the stop sign. We're still doing the same thing with it, we're still stopping, we're still moving, et cetera. If you really wanna transform it, you have to really change it up and take it to the next level. And that's sort of the roundabout, okay? When you think of the roundabout, it had all the issues we're gonna have to go through. It had the implementation dip. How many times did you talk to somebody in the past two years about how bad or good the roundabouts are? If our public had their wish, one month into the roundabouts, everyone would have been backhoed and torn apart and they would have put stoplights back in. But as people spend more time with them and get used to them, they find out that traffic flows much faster on the roundabouts. While we may have accidents, they're not fatal. So it actually is improving what we're doing. And John Hattie, 2009, published a study that was really key to looking at some of this. So many of the things that we, we as education institutions spend our time on have little or no correlation to student improvement in achievement. They really don't because we're spending all of our time on the transactions. We're spending all of our time on things that are very important, busing, for example, but it doesn't necessarily impact student achievement to a greater degree. It does impact it to some degree, but not as much as some of the bigger ticket items which are transformational. So I just offer that up as we're trying to move the pendulum into the transformation stages. The other thing we wanna do is we really wanna focus on avoiding innovation blindness. Microsoft announced today, this is from today, that they're going to focus Microsoft Office on iOS and Android devices. Can you say, "Coming a little late to the party"? Okay? In this op-ed column in the New York Times, "The Decline of the E-Empires," they actually quote Steve Ballmer, oh, sorry, who is the chairman of Microsoft. And I'll just read this, he says, "The trouble for Microsoft came with the rise of the new devices whose importance is famously failed to grasp." Here's Ballmer's quote, who by the way is worth, he could probably solve all of our budget issues for about the next 50 years. "There's no chance," declared Mr. Ballmer, "that the iPhone is going to get any significant market share." Well, he clearly was wrong. So what we're always trying to do is use examples from history, examples from what's occurring today and the pace of change is really fast. We know it's very fast, but we feel we're up to the challenge and we're always gonna be looking over the horizon. to be looking over the horizon. So what is our proposal?
After taking a look at all of that data that we had an opportunity to look at, the ISTI takeaways that you heard about, and input from this district technology team, we've been having lots of discussions over the last few months, and making a very conservative estimate of roughly a need of one technology coach for every hundred-plus-or-so clients, meaning our, our teachers. We are proposing a transfer of up to $550,000 from the 2013-2014 Technology Hardware Budget to provide for 8.0 FTE of embedded technology coaches K-12.
Now, what does that actually mean? What, what that would mean is we would decrease our hardware expenditures to that amount. Now, why would we say up to 550? It would really depend on which teachers or pieces of teachers would fit that role as to where that number would be, maybe a little less than that. But we feel we could do it for no more than that. But what that would do is without, basically, all we're going to be doing is reusing the dollars that have already been budgeted in a slightly different way. We're moving to the hardware piece, to supporting the people piece. The downside is, we'll be buying less hardware, and, and we have insufficient hardware to cover the whole district as it is, you all know that. But the, we're, we're getting to that point where we have hardware in the hands of teachers. We're just worried it's not going to be used as effectively if we don't support the teachers, and that's everything the research and information says, so.
Is that a one-year transfer, or would that mean you'd be coming back in another year and asking to restore $550,000 to the hardware budget and retain the, the teachers?
No, it'd be a permanent transfer. So that would be a, a reduction in the hardware budget permanently of that amount. And, and that's why we don't make that very lightly. I mean, we, we don't have enough in those dollars now. Just to give you an idea, you know, our, our total hardware budget's about a $1.7 million a year expenditure. That had been reduced by about $735,000 two years ago, I believe. Give you a, one of the articles I showed about a year ago was Eau Claire School District, they're $3.7 million a year, just hardware. And I had a conversation with, with my counterpart there, they actually have nearly double our, our tech support staff. So, and they're, they're pretty much carbon copy our size. We're not asking for any of that, but just to put that into a context, we know what this means. But to continue to, to put that extra $550,000 of hardware in there, minus the support for the teachers, we don't feel we're going to get as good a bang for the buck that way. And, and part of, of where we're going with the strategic plan is addressing where the long-term sustainability is to hit those other goals. So while we, you know, can't say what's going to all happen to budgets and everything two, three, four, five years down the road, we feel this is important enough that if we had to live with what we have today forever, and we're going to present that as part of the tech plan, two courses. One course of if you wanted to go one-to-one, what would it take to sustain that as a district? Another course of, A, assuming board approval to this, what would the future look like with that budget as well? Yeah?
One of the things that we've talked about several times is, you know, we keep, we, the district continues to purchase hardware. And there are districts where kids are encouraged or allowed or whatever to bring their own.
Yep.
And yet, there's going to be a huge population that can't do that. And so is that going to be a part of this, you know, we decrease that? For instance, I have two kids, I have two iPads. Can they just take them to school?
Yes.
You know what I mean? Instead of having to wait?
Yep. And board policy was changed a couple of years back to actually light that up and also light up even the use of social media.
Yep.
You know, in a lot of districts, they block YouTube. They block everything that you saw here today that our kids used for projects. Everything they, and everything that, that, that the, the TED Talk was talking about, what Scott was talking about in that TED Talk, they block it all.
But if we know that we're going to be decreasing that budget, the hardware by half a million, can we also turn around and maybe get to the citywide PTO and say, okay, we ain't buying it this time, you guys. We're, you know, we're getting to be broke, and if you've got it, bring it. I mean, is that a possibility yet?
Yes, they, yeah, absolutely, they can do that now. The, the real trick is, and part of the work of the tech coaches would be, is designing the learning activities to make sure they're using a software that is platform-agnostic, which is the toughest part of that. Give you an example, Evernote. Evernote works beautifully, whether it's on an i, any device you see here in the room, it works beautifully on. That's one tool, and that's one free tool. There's Google Apps also is another tool. But Google Apps plays a little different on something like this versus something like this. So those are not easy questions to answer, but people are working to answer them.
Okay.
Yeah, but absolutely, they can certainly bring them. Great questions.
Question?
Yes, Emma.
So I guess I grew up, you know, taking notes, looking at a projector, writing down what they say. And so if you were to give me an iPad in class, I'd be like, oh, I don't want to focus on anything, I just want to play around on it, because I didn't grow up with that kind of technology. So how are you going to incorporate and influence students in like my older generation or the grades, a couple of grades below me that have been brought up with, like, I guess you could say generic taking, note-taking skills? Like, how are you going to influence them to not goof off on the iPads or the Chromebooks and actually do work on them? Because that could be looked, looked at as like a big game, big game where you sit, the teacher's not looking over your shoulder, seeing if you're on the right site because you're of age that you should be trusted that you're not. So I just, it's hard, I won, I, that's what I wonder, is how you'll incorporate it into and influence a positive thing on technology, because, I mean, I have an iPhone, that's about it. And I, you know, and when I get to use an iPad at school, it's pretty sweet, but at the same time, I'd rather get to play around with it more than actually do like schoolwork on it, because I didn't have that as like the younger generations now going in the kindergarten and they can sit and play on them.
That's a great question, but I can't answer it, because I'm not a classroom teacher right now, so, but I know somebody who probably can.
I'm really glad that you asked that question, because I think that really highlights why it's a really prudent use of our money to transfer that money from hardware into people. Because ultimately, we can put an iPad in every single kid's hand, and if the teacher and the students don't know how to appropriately implement that and use that as a learning tool, we have, as Tara mentioned earlier, given them a $1,000 notebook. And that's not what we want to do in the district. That's not how we move forward, and that's not how we innovate. And so part of having that embedded professional development and those tech coaches working alongside our classroom teachers is to create learning opportunities that make those expectations for how that technology is used not only really clear, but really appealing to students. Because ultimately, we want you to play, and we want you to be creative, and we want you to be innovative, and do all of the things that, that we're talking about here today. But that really is going to require professional development for a lot of our staff so that they can figure out how to get students there.
Partly, I think, also is that great example of the roundabout. And I went from sixth grade to all my success in school is due to the transformation of me actually getting organized with technology, and Apple gave me away. So what I'm saying is, I think it's just, when you give the students the opportu, like, I am so motivated by this, because as a student, when you give them the opportunity, the student, mostly from me and my friends and what I've experienced, I can't say for all cases, but when you get, give him the innovation process, it opens up freedom and opportunity. And I think with that, and the security of having new equipment, not only creates a new project, but it turns that project for the student into a passion. And I hate to ramble on, but I just love the idea with, like, I can't really say a lot of words to express it, but, I mean, last year, I was with Mrs. Levy in one of my classes, and we did a blog, I did about the stock market and stuff, and I got, I could see who was all viewing my stuff. NearPod, I used that as a, a presentation that I'm, obviously needs more work on, but that will come with time. I just love the options in APUS History that I did. I was successful in that class, used my Mac for all the units, and found different options to go about helping me, saving time for other classes. And even with my friends, if we want to practice Spanish, go on Google Plus, let's go to Spain. Talking to Spanish people, so.
Well, here, here, you've asked and answered a lot of our questions, which is great, but here's some rationale points that we had.
So the rationale points are going to be kind of looping back to things we've already said, but they're based on our needs assessment, they're based on what we are hearing from staff, both anecdotally in our daily conversations and also in that survey that we conducted at the onset of our work. And it's based upon research and best practice. It's, it's a proven way of creating change in the district, it's a proven way to influence our students' ability to achieve in our classroom. And ultimately, when we look at the difference between investing in hardware and investing in people, we can look at it in this way. When we buy hardware, it's a depreciating asset. It's kind of the same notion that when you buy a brand-new car and you drive it off the lot, you just lost $5,000. And our hardware kind of functions that way. And we need it, and we realize it's a part of this equation, but I don't think it's the most important part of this equation. We have to acknowledge that when we invest in hardware, something that we bought for $1,000 is worth $700 the following year, $200 the year after that, and by the third year, it's obsolete. And when we invest in our staff, and when we invest in people, we have appreciating assets. We have something that is going to grow and increase in value from year to year, and I think that's really important. And we've heard that repeatedly through all of these workshops, that we need to be investing in people, and this is really no different.
So that, that's our presentation, those are the goals. We understand that some of this is out-of-the-box thinking, but I, I believe that's what we were charged with. So we've, we've done that, and this is our solution of trying to address the first of several technology goals. So we would certainly open that up for any questions, or if you have any other input, we'd love to hear.
And you plan to come with a resolution on the 23rd, is that correct?
Yes, that would be specific to, to the goal one that we talked about of transferring the five, up to $550,000 out of the hardware budget for that purpose.
And as, as Dave has kept me informed through this process, I, I've come to firmly believe that the direction and advice that this outstanding committee has generated is to be a very wise direction. And it's interesting how well that fits into that priority of needs of also supporting our, our staff. And all of this fits very well together with, with Mike's presentation on what we're losing, because it's one more opportunity for us to invest in our staff and prepare them better to be highly qualified and hopefully then hang on to them after we've trained them so well and been supported so well in technology. But I wish to also express my thanks to not only the members of the committee that are here tonight, but to the entire committee for their outstanding work. I watched them work through some very hot, long days in the summer, some pretty intensive efforts, and, and working hard and taking this job very seriously and refining, I noticed just the other day, refining the last part of the presentation, working hard in, in Dave's office and trying to be sure to have the best possible presentation for this evening that addressed the needs. And so I congratulate them and thank them for their outstanding work. It's really exciting, and it's nice not to have one more shelf filled with 12 inches worth of information and that is easily retrieved online and available.
Should be noted, everything in here was incredibly good, incredibly accurate, and a lot of the research we used, it's just very heavy and hard to carry around.
Right.
I forgot, you have a question, especially seeing Emma's presentation, the Oshkosh West Student, it's now a famous film company. I couldn't help but think, when you talk about eight technology coaches, I'm curious for where they come from, if they're existing staff or new recruits? And I, I think of a presentation, so if we can find people that have both, of course, the tech skill sets for, you know, hosting and posting and editing, all of the sort of film craft and video craft, can we marry technical skills with high-level cinematography skills? Somebody's from one of the top film schools, who's maybe worked in film on West Coast. And so we, we have a resource base of work, the photo world or the sound editing world, a few key people from top institutions in the world, in the country.
Well, the, the first and foremost criteria will be that they're fantastic teachers, because that's really what they're going to be doing, is teaching. We, we have found that we can, we can teach up a lot of the technical skills, and, and the other key piece is putting them in touch with people like that so that they can tap into that expertise. Whether or not they will come internal or external, I think it's going to be both. You know, I think we have some amazingly gifted people, you, you see some of them behind me here, who may or may not be interested in these kinds of positions, but we also may have some folks from the outside. You know, we're, we're going to be very open to a lot of this. The other interesting thing is, is, is we've talked about, and you saw the slide that Julie put forward earlier, all of these are being unified under the umbrella of instructional support. I mean, these, these are teacher support positions. And we have a whole bunch of acronyms that sometimes get very confusing. I know I've wrote a few, so they can get confusing. We're trying to put this together in a plan that will, will allow us to leverage some people, because in some cases, you may find, take, for example, Julie Rock, who is one of our, she's a halftime tech coach at Jefferson, also halftime IST at Jefferson. It's a perfect marriage between curriculum and technology. And that allows them to have one person who's full-time there, who's there, there the entire time. So that's really an advantage.
And I think that's a really important piece to understand, is that the tech coaches need to be deeply rooted in our curriculum, and that needs to be where all of this starts. And so it's easy to look at the presentation that shows what our students are doing with technology and, and listen in on all of their project ideas, but that starts with the Common Core standards. That starts with what, what areas of the curriculum are we addressing? How can we get students to be proficient and advanced in these Common Core standard skills? And then the technology comes in and enhances that experience for them. So it's really important that, that starts with curriculum.
Does your, does your, or does the technology plan include a timeline or a schedule for, I know we said we're, let me start over. I know we're focusing on professional development, but you can't go in and do training on the iPad if you don't have iPads then to use.
Yep.
So there'll have to be some money is obviously devoted toward hardware software. So given that as a premise, is there a schedule or a timeline for getting the, the hardware software into the schools concomitant with doing the professional development so that that's communicated? The reason I ask that question is I went to a brat stand in the spring on a cold May day and asked this lady, these two ladies who were working the brat stand, where they were from. They told me they were from Smith Elementary School, and they were raising money for iPads. And I said, really? I said, I thought the district had a technology plan. They knew nothing about that, they had no idea that there was such a plan, and they had no idea where Smith Elementary School fit in the, in the whole scheme of things. So that kind of communication, to me, is key with not only the schools, but the parent groups out there who are wondering when their children are going to gain access.
Right.
So is that included in the plan?
Yeah, it is. Actually, we're taking it one step farther. We're actually going to be, be, and we, you've heard us use the term depreciating. We're actually going to be depreciating the equipment and have a rotational scheme up there, two ways. One, if the, if we want to go one-to-one and take it, you know, and actually address that part of the strategic plan, that's obviously going to require extra resources, more than we currently have, and, and how we do that, we'll, we'll have to decide how we do that, whether that's referendum or whatever. And then the other one is, given the existing resources we have after this change, what does it mean and, and how long will it take, and what's that all going to look like? We've been really blessed that we've had PTOs, we've gotten a great deal of grant money from the Wisconsin Technology Initiative to put smart boards in a lot of our rooms. I don't have the, the latest figure, but I know it's, it's well in excess of half a million dollars that none of us were taxed for that put a lot of hardware in our schools. We can do it for less than anybody else, but we won't be able to do it for nothing. So we're, we're really going to have to say, okay, given the depreciating asset, given this schedule of implementation and rollout, what does the board and the community want to do? Because if we go with our existing dollars, even if we kept the 550 grand in hardware, you're never going to hit it, because we're too big. We're a very big district, and the, the dollars that we're spending are less than most districts our size on, on hardware. But the good news is we've gotten a lot farther than anybody thought we would, because if you remember, back in 2010, we had about eight days, I, I remember it, I had eight days to craft where we needed to go with the strategic plan that was kind of outside of this. And it was more so, then it was just triage. That was just getting the generator and the, and the, so that we didn't have ma- major outages. We're now well beyond that, so we've now moved into that next phase where we need to communicate out, when is your child going to have access to some of that technology and what's it going to look like? Those are going to be fantastic conversations to have, and you're going to see that information coming in the, in the tech plan.
Thank you.
Yep. Yep.
Anyone else?
Thank you for your patience, we know it was a lot of information all at once.
Thank you for your time and the presentation. All right. Number six, at risk, I believe we are going to put off until, not the 23rd, but the following meeting, is that correct?
Yes, the, the next workshop session, the first meeting of November.
Which brings us to requests for future agenda items. Anyone have any requests for future agenda items? Seeing none, announcements? Barb?
I don't know where this, maybe this doesn't really fit here, but I, it's more of a question. I was looking at, I feel like I'm playing catch-up as the new member of the board. I know I ask a lot of questions, and I guess I apologize for that, but I'm just trying to, to learn more. I read board policies today, 170, 171, and 173. 171, excuse me, 170, dealing with board meetings, and it refers to the first meeting of the month where the workshop sessions have a purpose of generating discussion and providing feedback, and it says, "An executive summary of information shall be used." I didn't see summaries of information, executive summaries, when I received the board packet, so I called Sherry, Stan's secretary, and she said, "Well, no, they don't necessarily do that." So I don't know what, how this meshes with the practice here, because for at least three of the reports tonight, I don't think we had information sent to us in advance. I think that's a problem, because if we say we're a transparent district, it's, it's about the board, because this is the board's meeting, but it's also about the public. We don't have access to the materials we receive tonight, and if they don't have cable television, this information is lost. That's not very transparent to me. So personally, I would like to see at least, as the board policy says, a, an executive summary that comes with every workshop item, so that not only the board is alerted, maybe I can have some of my questions answered ahead of time, and the public also knows what's going on. So I don't know if that's a question or a comment.
We will certainly take that under advisement to do a paragraph or two summary to add to those. As you could see by the volume of what we're doing, we are, we are at 150 to 180% of maximum capacity, trying to address all the things here, and this is the latest meeting and the longest meeting we've had in, in my 15 months here. And we're trying to deliver on lots of promises, and we will attempt to respond to that, but we are, we're having a staff carrying a burden that is incredible, so.
I can relate to that.
I guess I would reiterate that, too. Whenever I bring up things that I want to have at the board, I'm expected to come up with a summary. And if we're going to have workshops of this nature and stuff, it would be nice to have an overview of what is going on and how this fits into the strategic plan. I guess I would like to see something like that, too.
And in the reports that were received tonight, you saw the connection, but it just wasn't hearing any.
Right. Barb, anything else?
No, I won't ask any more questions.
No, that's quite all right. Other announcements? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Call the roll?
Vito?
Aye.
Vito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lundberg? Saganek?
Aye.
Saganek, aye. Weenhoff?
Aye.
Weenhoff, aye. Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.